I was gonna sit, but since you stand.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the June 25th, 2014 meeting of the Litchfield School Board. I would like to call us to order and start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any revisions? I was hoping something was gonna come off, but... Summary of non-public actions from June 4th, 2014. Mr. York made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of May 29th, 2014, as written. Mr. Bork seconded the motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. Barker made a motion to accept the nomination of Brandon Keer as the CHS Physical Education Health Teacher at a salary of $17,535 for the 2014-2015 year. Mrs. Lapore seconded, the motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. Bork made a motion to accept the nomination of Rebecca Goldfarb as a GMS District Speech Pathologist at a salary of $38,710 for the 2014-2015 year. Mr. Barker seconded, the motion carried 5-0-0.
I got happy.
Any correspondence? I don't think I had any. Approval of the draft minutes from the 4th?
Motion for the minutes from June...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you. First round of community forum, if anyone wants to address the board. Actually, can I just ask you to hold in case there's any residents that want to speak first? Nobody does, so you're clear.
I do want to speak, but you can go first, it doesn't matter.
No, go ahead.
We were expecting people to be seated, or very short people today.
Kathleen Falls, "Eat My Plane." I came in today to speak again for leveling. I've been here before about it. I think the district needs to really look at it and consider it seriously. I would propose leveling math, starting at third grade. My son just went through third grade math, and I counted up all of the topics, looking at one of the Common Core websites, and there were 33 topics that they cover. When you look at our school year, in general, 36 weeks, you take out the first week of school, because obviously they're not learning then, the last week of school, all the testing that occurs, which is easily a week, and then Thanksgiving, when we go for two days, that means they have 33 topics in 32 weeks. Not a realistic feat for the average student. The above-average student, who math comes naturally to them, absolutely. They can cruise through at that speed and successfully retain it all. But when you look at the average student, or the student who struggles in math, then we are asking way too much of them. They're not getting the repetition that they need in order to solidify skills. And not only that, probably the most detrimental thing that we're doing to our kids is that we're taking students who previously were average in math, and now they hate math because they struggle at it. And they're not struggling because they have a math disability. They're not struggling because they're not able to learn it. They're struggling because they don't have enough time to learn it. And they're deciding at the third grade level, because I know a lot of third graders, from my son's friends talking to parents, who their kids now hate math, because it is just too much, too hard, too fast. I don't know if you guys, if you are third grader, but the rest of you don't. They've gone from multiplication into division into fractions, comparing fractions, comparing like fractions, comparing different fractions, place value, geometric concepts, convex, concave, never mind the language that is expected of those students. It's just too much, too fast. So I would propose that we level, starting in math, starting in third grade for math, so that the kids who can do it, great, let them fly. The kids who can't, slow them down before they become so frustrated they give up on math and catching on the age. If you look at historically, if you ask anyone, I think in this town, what is the most successful math program we have, they would say the reading program. Why is that? We have surfer groups, we level it. However you want to slice it, we break it down into ability small chunks, because teaching difficult concepts works better when you teach in small groups. Why don't we do it in math then? We've identified ourselves as a district that has difficulty in math. Why don't we break it down into small groups? Instead, what we do is, we throw this Common Core at them, has its strengths and its weaknesses, we go so fast, we expect our teachers to teach all of these concepts in this little amount of time, so now they have to teach to the Common Core curriculum instead of teaching to ability. We have a class that has ability levels from here to here, so they can't even narrow it down and say, you know what, my class is struggling in multiplication, I'm gonna slow down, because I can speed up when I get to geometry. Because you're gonna have five kids that struggle in multiplication, you're gonna have five kids that struggle in division, you're gonna have five kids that struggle in geometry, so they'd always be slowing down, they'll never get through it, because we don't spread them out. And so, now, they're teaching across the board, so we have to cruise through the curriculum to make sure they get to all of it. Then, we have our kids who struggle, they finally qualify for Title I math, and what do we do? We level them. We take our lowest kids, we put them into small groups, because we know that's what works. Meanwhile, our average and our above-average kids, they're left to flounder, to either succeed through their own natural given ability, or fall into that underneath group. Because those kids in the middle are never gonna make it to that higher level without that support. So that's my thing on leveling, third grade math. When you hit fifth and sixth, seventh, eighth, I think they should be leveled across the board. And not necessarily you're in Level 1 for math, so you're in Level 1 across the board, or you're in Level 1 for reading. Kids are different. They have strengths and weaknesses. Most people, if you take a poll, they're good in math, not so much in reading, or English. Why don't we teach them that way? Why don't we treat them that way? We treat them as if they are packaged carbon copy kids, stick them in a room, and again, go at one's feet. Our teachers can't slow down and really identify their area of weakness, because we're cruising through. And then what happens is, our kids learn quantity, but they're not learning quality. And where does that leave us? They get two grades higher, and they can't remember the concept that they learned in fifth grade, because they cruised through and they only learned it for the moment, but it never turned into long-term learning. And I think we need long-term learners. What else? So that's my level on leveling. I think we really need to look at, I think, at the middle school level. We need to seriously consider that. Oh, and my next thing is AmesWeb. I'm not a big fan of AmesWeb. I would like someone to explain to me the benefit of it. From what I understand, it's an eight-minute snapshot of a kid. When I look at both my kids, their AmesWeb scores do not match their NWA or their Kneecap. My kids are both significantly higher in Kneecap and NWA than they are in AmesWeb. So my question would be, what is more accurate? Standardized testing, or AmesWeb? Because if you're gonna tell me standardized testing is more accurate, then AmesWeb testing is a waste of their time. And they're losing instruction time by participating in AmesWeb, which now puts us even farther behind on the Common Core race. And I don't know how true that is for everyone else, but my understanding is, it's an eight-minute snapshot, so if you're a kid who bam 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 pounds through it, you have a better chance. If you're a kid who stops things and works out a problem, then you tend to score on the lower range. And that's how it's been explained to me why one's higher and one's lower. But then again, is it an accurate picture? And what are we using it for? If our kids fall up in the really low range, they go into Title I. That's great, they get that small group that I'm advocating for. But our kids who are average and above-average on it, we don't do anything with it, because we don't have a level to move them around in. So really, it's just free-floating information. And do we need to test our kids that much? We're wondering why they're not moving ahead, but we take away instruction time to give them these tests. And I'm not against standardized testing, but when I see such a big discrepancy, then I wonder. I have a child who in reading was proficient with distinction, which I hear is a tough test, and didn't even hit the target in reading in AmesWeb. That's a big difference. There's a discrepancy there. Who's accurate? So that's concerning to me as a parent. Couple of other points I just wanted to run through. I still think we need to consider, we charge kids to ride the bus to school, but we don't charge kids to ride the bus to a sports game. What kind of priority are we setting, and what are we teaching the kids is our priority? It's okay, get on that bus and enjoy your free ride to your baseball, football, basketball game, but you want to get to school and get an education, pay your $100. I think that's a horrible message to send. I think we should consider doing a facilities fee. Now, I know pay-to-play standard set before is illegal, a facilities fee, weigh out the sports, weigh out the extracurricular, look at the amount of usage they get, whether it's the field, course inside the gym, how much of a tax it is on the building, and put a flat rate fee based on that. And take away the busing fee. I think it's absolutely horrible that we charge our kids to ride a bus to get an education. And then take the parking fee, statistic me in the general fund, put that into the activities fund. Because I understand a parking fee, but I don't know what the surrounding schools are, but the busing thing drives me crazy. So I'm just gonna both like that.
So if we adopted the New Hampshire rule, it says, we don't have to provide any busing to this high school to get to or from school, are you okay with that?
No.
But it's a, we don't have...
I understand that.
So we are doing it, and we're, kids that drive, pay $100 to park their car.
Right, and kids who take a bus pay $100 to take a bus.
Pay a bus, pay $100, so.
Right.
Made it fair across everybody.
I don't really call that fair. You say, okay, so you want to come to school, pay $100, whether you drive or you take a bus, but I'm gonna send you to a baseball game for free. So the tax dollars to provide a free public education doesn't count getting them to school, but it does count playing baseball.
Well, I, we spend to move them, to get them to school and home from school, billions of dollars. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to get them to sporting events. So I think we more than adequately move our kids to and from school with many dollars spent doing so.
And your kids that go to a sporting event are this percentage of the school, and your kids who are supposed to be attending school should be 100%.
As it should be.
So. And, that's it. No questions?
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
This height was set for the former LEA president.
Excuse me.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nathan Cooper. I'm the president of the Litchfield Education Association. I want to start off by thanking the board for letting me speak this evening. As you know, yesterday was the last day for teachers, and Monday was for students in the Litchfield School District. And while the summer months provide us the opportunity to decompress, recharge our batteries, explore professional development, focus on other jobs, and plan for next year, we also know there's much work the association must complete in conjunction with the district. Tonight, I want to briefly speak about one of those tasks, and that is the task of appraising school and school district climate. Yesterday, I sent correspondence to the board, the superintendent, and the building administrators regarding a survey being conducted by the LEA, along with copy, a copy of the questions sent to our members. I want to publicly reiterate some of the key points I made in this correspondence. The purpose of the survey is to collect quantitative and qualitative data about school and school district climate, and to provide helpful feedback as appropriate on behalf of the association. The survey is not sponsored by individual teachers and staff, but rather by the Litchfield Education Association. The survey is also completely confidential. Survey must be completed by July 2nd, and so far, 70% of our members have completed it. After the 4th of July holiday, the executive board of the LEA will convene to aggregate the data and find the best way to communicate the results to our members, the administration, the superintendent, and to the school board. Should you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them this evening, or by email. And again, I want to thank you for letting me speak this evening, and I look forward to sharing the results. Any questions?
Did you get my email today?
Yes, I haven't. We already sent it out. I think there's some members, if the question isn't pertaining, or...
They're just leaving it.
They're just leaving it blank, which they can do, but yeah, that's a good point. And I hope my comment answered your question, but I can certainly provide it.
I think the only question to answer is, when you provide the results back to us, are you gonna break it down by school?
Yeah, what we did is, if you look, the first question has them identify if they're from GMS, CHS, or LMS. So then, within the program, we're able to, we're able to look at the results on a school level basis, and then we can look at it district-wide. So when we present the results, we can certainly present them by school as well. So that's something we're interested in seeing as well.
You think we'll have them, you said after July, you're gonna look at it?
Yeah, after 4th of July, we're gonna convene. I know we had tried. Dr. Cochran wants to meet with the LEA Executive Board, which I think is a really good thing for all of us to be able to meet, but in scheduling, we just couldn't find a day. We were gonna do, actually, today, but then, we just couldn't get to it, so I said, well, let's do after the 4th, so that everyone can decompress, and then we'll come back to it after, so.
I just think, as long as it's in the summer, it'd be fine.
Yeah.
If there's good stuff in there, if it comes in September, it's gonna get lost.
Well, yeah, I think, that's what we want, is for it to be timely. That's, two of the things we've tried to balance are timeliness and quality, so we didn't want to just rush something out for the sake of having it. But we also want to, you know, I think it would be good if we could get the results and look at them this summer. So I know my priority will be to get the board to be looking at this in July, and really crunch that data, and hopefully have it to by end of July, early August, because I agree, there's so much going on at the end of August and September, and I think it'd be better to get to it before, so.
Does the LEA plan on, when it gets results, do they plan on taking action with it? They're gonna analyze them, or they're gonna look at themselves and figure out what they can do differently?
Yeah, yeah, that's one thing, is, you know, we don't want to say that, you know, that climate is only the responsibility of the board or the administration, so I think we certainly have to take a look at what we can do too. So we have to be proactive in that too. And I think the results will dictate to what it is that we're gonna do. Because we really wanted to get quantitative results, because, you know, we often get questions, you know, from administrators, from Dr. Cochran, the board, how are people, how are things? And we want to be able to answer that with real data, instead of just sort of, well, you know, I heard yesterday that so-and-so is... So we wanted real, real results to report, and to look at ourselves. Because it's one thing to hear something from two or three people, we wanted to take a real, holistic approach to it. So that was the idea. Any other questions?
Well, just for the board, my question was, there wasn't like an NA on the, in the Word doc, or does it apply, or no experience? Typically, you get one of those, but if, I guess if you just treat a blank as no experience, then it's the same effect.
Yeah, that's what we're, you know, that's what we're doing. I believe there's results that have come in, where it has something blank, or they could, they can even say, I thought it was important to not only have the qualitative, but, or the quantitative, but also have that quantitative, so they can put in, I don't have any experience, or... Because people really, not only, they don't just want to click a button and say yes or no, some people wanted the opportunity to elaborate, so we wanted to, we wanted to give them the opportunity to do that, so.
As I was reading through the questions, I didn't really feel the questions were very fair to the district at all, or to the administrators. I think it was a very one-sided correspondence. I didn't see any question in there where it asked teachers to take, judge their peers, if you ask if your peers are doing the best they could do. You ask that of the administration and of the SAU office, and in some of those instances, the questions, you don't have any idea the direction the school board has given to administrators. So the responses can be great to not great, and you may look at them one way, and we may look at them a wholly different way.
Yep.
Because you don't have the information. And I think that you truly wanted to reword those questions, in which it was the teachers being critiqued, and send it to 1,500 homes. I think that would be just as good of a process. If you're gonna judge the administration, which I truly believe that's what this is, is a judgment on the administration of the schools, then you need to do the same thing on the teachers, to the people that they answer to, which is the voter.
Yeah.
And the taxpayers.
Yep, I think that happens every year too. I know we go through an evaluation process, I think that happens on a year-to-year basis.
Not as thorough as you did with your survey.
Any other questions? Very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Cochran?
Quick update on our student information system. Mr. Hancock has led the group through...
To the wilderness.
Well, to some extent. Based on the last two times that the high school has tried to upload grades, I believe yesterday, the guidance director spent over an hour on the phone with Rediger, trying to get things to run. So, you know, let's hope that we can hold things together for another year. But we started off with three products that we felt matched the criteria that Kyla and I had identified, based on some national work that was done, and the specific needs in New Hampshire. Eliminated one of those, and we're down to Infinite Campus, and Fallen Aspen. Both of those have multiple districts to work with in the state. At this point in time, we're establishing about the third week of September as the visitations. We're gonna take some teams to visit a couple of other districts, see if we can get some clarity around, around which of these is a better match for us, and then have the group make a recommendation to the board in time to make a cutover and start working. Hopefully have a contract ready by late October, early November. Does that sound, or you're looking for somebody a little sooner?
I think we would be targeting to start work in early after the first of the year, so contracts can be signed before that at some point.
From the signing of the contract, both vendors anticipate a four-month work period, where a lot of the transition, in terms of setting up the program, and then taking the data from the old system, pulling it out, putting in the new system, and then comes PD for staff down to the function. But it also means a lot of tweaking, in terms of making the system work, not only, not just creating the different levels of access, but also working to maximize the interface for different job descriptions. So we would hope to be able to schedule 15, 16 in the new system, and be up and running with a web-based grade book as part of the system. We're also anticipating either some cost savings over what it's costing us all in now, or depending on whether it'll be a little bit of savings, a little bit more savings. But I think the recommendation is essentially gonna come down to which is a better match and a better product. If it's a tie, then I think cost comes into the equation, because it'll be a difference of about $10,000 a year. Kyla, did you want to add anything?
No. Pretty fair summary. Hopefully, the goal, ultimate goal would for everything to be going live a year from this September.
So you have like, the balance of 14, 15, to figure everything out, do the training, and then...
Yeah, we wouldn't be using it in a live manner for 14 and 15.
The overlap is always a good idea when you're trying to introduce something new that's as pervasive as the, while we succeeded with the lunch changeover, not that we had a lot of choice in the matter, even things like that, you'd like to...
Yeah, I would have much rather not done that mid-year, but I do have to say that vendor did an excellent job, as well as our food service people.
I'm sure that wasn't their first mid-year experience. Any questions on the student information system? Ms. Gandia?
Can I stay here?
Oh, that's fine.
Dr. Cochran, my name is Laura Gandia, and I reside at 3 Chamberlain Drive, Litchfield. I have two young boys, one who'll be entering 8th grade in September, and the other entering 6th grade in September, both at the middle school. I am here to talk to you today about a Day of Silence that occurred at Campbell High School on April 11th, 2014. The Day of Silence is a day that is sponsored and/or promoted by GLSEN, which stands for Gay, Lesbian, Straight Education Network. The Day of Silence, according to GLSEN, is a day where students take a vow of silence in effort to promote anti-bullying against gays, lesbians, and trans, and transgenderes, a day to be tolerant for all lifestyles. It is my understanding that this is the second year that CHS has sponsored and/or promoted this event through a group called Campbell Cares. The day begins with a morning announcement that the Day of Silence is being recognized at CHS, followed by a song which is played over the loudspeaker. Students are then told that they can wear a badge and take a vow of silence for the day. Faculty is also encouraged to wear a badge and take a vow of silence, and it's my understanding that some do so. This year, in front of the cafeteria, there was a banner which proudly displayed GLSEN, which again is G-L-S-E-N, and a table set up where students can obtain a badge, which is a white sticker that they write on, and they can write something they feel represents their intention for that day. Later that day, during further announcements, students and faculty are once again encouraged to participate. Some do, and some do not. So GLSEN, exactly what is this group, who are they, and what is its message? This is important to know and to understand. The mission of GLSEN reads in part, "The Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network strives to assure that every member of every school community is valued and respected regardless of sexual orientation, or gender identity, or expression. We believe that such an atmosphere engenders a positive sense of self, which is the basis of educational achievement and personal growth. Since homophobia and heterosexism undermine a healthy school climate, we work to educate teachers, students, and the public at large about the damaging effects these forces have on youth and adults alike. A message of tolerance and respect? Maybe. However, a closer look at this mission is very telling. First, what is heterosexism? It is defined as discrimination or prejudice against homosexuals on the assumption that heterosexuality is a normal sexual orientation. Is this mission statement saying that if you believe that heterosexuality is the normal, that you are prejudiced and you have a damaging effect as an individual or a student? Is GLSEN attempting to define a new normal? Is there some intolerance towards other people's viewpoints? Let's look further into this organization. Its founder and creator, Ken Jennings, led the organization for 17 years. Jennings was quoted in the foreword of one of his books that he authored saying, "I'll admit that in a world populated by the likes of Jesse Holmes, and Gary Bauer, and Pat Buchanan, we can't blame our schools for all the prejudice we see visited upon queer people. Children learn prejudice from many sources, their family, the media, religious institutions, the list could go on. But the fact remains that the schools are the place where children spend most of their time than anywhere else between the ages of 5 and 18." Is the leader of this group saying that his belief shouldn't be embraced by all students over the beliefs of the students' parents and their religion? Is he saying that students' beliefs based on their religion that was learned from their religious institution, or church, or parents, make them prejudiced? Or a belief that one holds in line with the student's family values now also makes them prejudiced? Is it his way, or the highway? Is he noting that children spend most of the time at school, and this is where GLSEN can really have the most impact, to change these family and religious beliefs with its own? Is this a group that CHS wants to promote and/or endorse? Some believe that Jennings is also known to have demonstrated intolerance towards conservative faith-based viewpoints. In Jennings' book, Becoming Visible, he states that some historians traced the development of homophobia in the West from the time when Christianity was adopted by Romans. Whether homophobia began in the late Roman Empire because of the introduction of Christianity, or became widespread in the Middle Ages for political reasons, one thing remains clear: Biblical scriptures were used to justify persecutions of those who loved members of their own sex. Is this espousing CHS' mission of respect? Also, GLSEN's mission is multifaceted. As noted in its manual, it states, "Please note, we have chosen to use gender-neutral language in this resource. We recognize that replacing he and she with the gender-neutral they is grammatically questionable, but we hope you will overlook this in support of students who do not use he or she to identify themselves." GLSEN is attempting to infiltrate the public school system with a different curriculum, books, language espousing its viewpoint, viewpoint, starting with children as young as the age of 5 in kindergarten. In 2009, GLSEN gave a Respect Award to David Bonnet, a technology entrepreneur. According to the Huffington Post, GLSEN holds the Respect Awards in order to highlight the work of individuals, corporations, students, educators, who have made a significant impact in the area of diversity, inclusion, and the safe school movement, while also serving as positive role models. Here are some excerpts from the speech made upon receiving the GLSEN Respect Award. It is the Eva Jandagel and fundamentalist group's... "It is the evangelical and fundamentalist groups that teach homosexuality is a sin who stand in the way of fairness and equality. It is time to combat head-on religious organizations that are funding opposition to marriage equality and safe school legislation. Among our greatest adversaries who actively work against us are the leaders of the Catholic, Mormon, and evangelical churches who seek to deny equal protection. The children taught at an early age that the Bible condemns homosexuality may become the school bullies and then later the adults who vote to deny marriage equality. It is time that we raise our children to be independent thinkers and deeply suspicious of Bible-beating organized religion." Is he saying that children who believe in the Bible are ones who are now going to become bullies? Is this a message that CHS wants? One could argue that it is very disturbing that a national organization, tutored as Safe Schools, for its Safe School Program for taxpayer-funded classrooms, were given an honored platform to these kinds of intolerant messages toward mainstream faith groups. Is GLSEN's mission really to promote a safe school environment? Or is it to put forth a political agenda for gay marriage and to teach students to be deeply suspicious of the Bible? It has been put forth that GLSEN wants schools to push students beyond tolerance and acceptance into admiration and advocacy. Also, GLSEN has come under fire for promoting sexually explicit books, as well as materials that contain derogatory statements towards religious and socially conservative people. A question that comes to mind is, why does CHS want to endorse and publicly advertise this organization given all of this controversy? Is this the message of tolerance and respect that CHS is seeking to put forth? During the morning announcement at CHS on the Day of Silence, CHS administration approved and played a song by Macklemore entitled Same Love. Some of these lyrics are inappropriate and political, and I provided copies of these lyrics prior to the meeting. For example, the lyrics state, "The right-wing conservatives think it's a decision, and you can be cured with some treatment and religion. Man-made rewiring of a predisposition, playing God. America the brave still fears what we don't know, and God loves all his children and somehow forgotten." But we paraphrase a book written 3,500 years ago. The school legally needs to be viewpoint-neutral. Viewpoint-neutral. Is playing a song that attacks right-wing conservative viewpoint-neutral? And God loves all of his children and is somehow forgotten? Is the school promoting the idea that if you do not embrace homosexuality, then your God does not love all of his children? Is this appropriate or legal? As everyone knows, the Bible and any religion is sacred and at the heart of most religious teachings and foundations. So once again, is CHS promoting the idea that if you do not embrace homosexuality, then you paraphrase the Bible, your most sacred book, promote hate? Is this appropriate? Is this legal? The same, the song Same Love was used and argued by some as being created to support marriage equality, a political statement. Is the school now engaging in a political debate? The song states, "It's human rights for everybody. There's no difference. No freedom till we're damn equal." Damn right, I support it. Then these lyrics, I'll just put these lyrics out there with very little comment. The lyrics are, "When I was at church, they taught me something else. If you preach 'he' at the service, those words are anointed. That holy water that you soak in has been poisoned. That holy water that you soak in has been poisoned. I believe most people understand the significance and importance of the sacrament of baptism. Holy water that you soaked in has been poisoned?" Really? A political statement once again. "Progress marches on with the veils over our eyes. We turn our back on this cause till the day that my uncles can be united by law." I thought this was supposed to be a day of tolerance, a day of anti-bullying. That is not my impression. Then, as a mockery to religion, this song quotes the Bible. "Love is patient. Love is kind. Not crying on Sundays," all a reference to church. I also printed out part of the video which you have that makes it very clear that religion is being mocked. Is this appropriate, and again, the message that CHS wants its students to receive? It is my understanding that CHS needs to be viewpoint-neutral, and I ask, was it? The implementation of what actually transpires also needs to be discussed. As indicated earlier, students were given the option of wearing a badge and taking a vow of silence for the whole day. Faculty was also encouraged to participate. From a legal standpoint, students have been able to exercise the First Amendment right and not speak during non-academic times like breaks, lunchtime, hallway, passing between classes. Here at CHS during the Day of Silence, the vow of silence took place all day during all classes. Is this a disruption to the academic environment? How is a teacher supposed to effectively teach when he or she is not speaking? How is a student who has a question for that teacher supposed to respond when that teacher is not speaking? What happens to classroom dialogue? Have the students at CHS just been denied a day of quality education? How is a student with a different viewpoint supposed to thrive academically that day? Would it surprise you if students wore the badge with no idea about what the day was, but just so they could wear it so they did not have to speak or participate? Would it surprise you that students wore a badge with GLSEN on it but had no idea what that meant? How does the academic environment flourish when faculty and students are not speaking? Is this the type of quality education that the Litchfield School District wants even for one day? There are also policy, procedures, rules, regulations, laws that the Litchfield School District is obligated to follow. First, it is my understanding that there was no parental notification that this event was taking place, and I refer you to policy KAA regarding parental involvement, and there are others. Most parents that I spoke to had no idea that this Day of Silence ever or even does occur at CHS. Advertising is another policy. As stated earlier, the song played, there was, after the song was played, a table was set up with a banner displaying G-L-S-E-N. Litchfield School District Policy, KHB, speaks of advertising in schools. This policy provides that the school board recognizes that public schools provide a potential market for commercial activities. Therefore, it is important that the district protects students and parents from exploitation and assure that commercial activities do not interfere with the educational program. As stated, described above, did this GLSEN commercial activity of the Day of Silence interfere with the educational program for that day at CHS? Were those students who chose not to wear that badge exploit it? Was this failed school district policy, KHB, violated? Some have argued that this group has a political agenda, and it is well-known that Macklemore's Same Love song was used to campaign for same-sex marriage. Litchfield School District Policy, KHB, provides further, "Political advertising will not be placed or affixed to school district property." GLSEN's banner was affixed to the school wall outside of the cafeteria. Was this a violation? Litchfield School District Policy, BBBG, states, "Campaign materials may be posted and distributed and a school rented for a campaign meeting or being used for an all-candidate forum. However, all political materials must be removed from school premises at the end of such meeting." I don't believe the school was rented during that day. Did the posting of that banner occur when the school was be renting, or was there a meeting for this? Was BBBG violated? What about Litchfield School District Policy, GBI, states, "Employees shall not advocate their personal political views or engage in political activities defined in this policy during hours of official employment." By wearing this badge, did CHS teachers advocate the political views and violation of this policy? Were they now promoting the same views and the Same Love song used in promoting the GLSEN Day of Silence? Was there another violation? Litchfield School District Policy, IND, states, "Since a public school is not a place of worship, the instructional materials, activities, decorations, or assembly programs that are introduced into the schools should not promote any religion." Shouldn't the converse also be true? The denigration of any religion, should that be allowed to be introduced in school? Did the Same Love song that was introduced during the GLSEN Day of Silence do just that by denigrating Catholic and Christian views? Litchfield School District Policy, JF, states, "Students shall have the right to peacefully and responsibly advocate change of law, policy, or regulations. Students may exercise the right to freedom of expression through speech, assembly petition, and other lawful means. The exercise of this right must not interfere with the rights of others. Freedom of expression may not be utilized to present material that tends to be obscene or slanderous or to defame character or to advocate violation of federal, state, or local laws." Did GLSEN's Day of Silence responsibly advocate for a change when it played the song Same Love? Did the silence of the faculty and students during academic times interfere with the rights of others, especially those seeking a day of quality education, by not speaking and participating in class discussion? Were the same lyrics, were the lyrics of Same Love slanderous to Christian, Catholics, right-wing conservatives? Litchfield School Policy, JJ, provides that core curricular expectations, and this is being geared towards the Campbell Cares, "are designed to ensure that students participating in these programs serve as good representatives of our school and demonstrate appropriate character, good sportsmanship, teamwork, mutual respect, and trust. They prepare students to abide by the law and serve as role models and contribute to their community. Uphold the core values of Campbell, including character, courage, respect, and responsibility." Did the playing of the Same Love song during the Day of Silence uphold the value of CHS? Were there respect for those viewpoints that were inconsistent with that of GLSEN, particularly to Catholics, Christians, right-wing conservatives? Was this a violation of Policy, JJ? And what about New Hampshire statutes? What about NHRS-A193E that speaks of adequate public education? Adequate public education shall provide all students with the opportunity to acquire certain skills. Did this happen on April 11th during the Day of Silence? Did all students feel like they had the opportunity to thrive during that time when students weren't speaking, when faculty weren't speaking? And it was also brought to my attention from a student's father that when he wore a badge indicating that he chose a heterosexual lifestyle, he was asked to remove it. This Day of Silence was sponsored by GLSEN, G-L-S-E-N, and the S is referring to straight. Where was this message of tolerance? Where was the respect for somebody who chose a straight lifestyle? Is CHS just teaching tolerance for one viewpoint? A student can legally express a differing viewpoint, and the school, under most cases, cannot prevent him from doing so. Were CHS actions in violation of the students' First Amendment rights? From a legal standpoint, once Litchfield School District opens its doors to this type of activity, it opens its doors to potential liability and lawsuits. The First Amendment guarantees the right to engage in voluntary free speech conversation in a way that does not interfere or substantially disrupt classroom time and academic instruction. This means that one can voluntarily express the personal and religious beliefs to classmates through verbal or written expressions, as long as they follow school policy and do not engage in the activities during classroom or instruction time. Was this the case here? Were school policy followed? Were the violations of school policies? Were the violations of First Amendment rights? Did the school remain viewpoint-neutral in its action and implementation? Were CHS missions exemplified in its actions? Was there a disruption in classroom times and academic instruction, hence resulting in legal liability to the school? Did CHS create an environment where all students could thrive during the day of April 11th? Does April 11th represent a climate and culture that CHS wishes to embody? I ask that you consider all of this for future activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
What would you like to see happen? What would you like to see happen? Do you think they should go away altogether? Do you think they shouldn't be silent? Do you think GLSEN shouldn't be allowed to promote it?
I don't think GLSEN should be put in the public schools. If you wanted to have a Day of Tolerance sponsored and created by CHS and the students and the faculty, that was tolerant of all lifestyles, I think that would be completely But again, sponsoring a group, an outside group that has these political affiliations and these viewpoints, I think can be detrimental to the school.
Do you think that the teachers in wearing the badges, and I understand what your point is, that they're, be difficult to teach if they're not saying anything, but do you think that the teachers in wearing the badges are showing their support for some of the kids that they teach that may be lesbian, gay? Are you saying that they, that, is it, is your problem that teachers are not teaching or that they're making a statement, I guess?
My concern is for both. My concern is in wearing a badge, taking a vow of silence, that's a major concern, again, with the disruption of the academic environment. And the statements that they're making, given the context of how this day was presented, is also a political statement, which I think disrupts the dynamics between a student and a teacher as well, especially if those viewpoints are different. And again, that goes to the viewpoint neutrality that the school has always, you know, talked about and tried to endorse and put forth in all their academic instruction.
When you say it's a political statement, are you talking about any particular political party that's making that statement?
I'm talking about a political issue of promoting gay marriage, which was demonstrated by the song Same Love and some of the statements put forth by GLSEN.
Is it, is it pro-gay marriage or is it in support of people who are lesbian, gay, bi, transgender?
You would have to ask the people wearing the badges. And again, and that goes to the confusion. What is a student supposed to think? Are they going to have the courage to ask? Should they even ask? Is that appropriate conversation for a student to have with a teacher?
I would say that that's probably the point of the demonstration.
So the point of the demonstration is for students and teachers to engage in a political dialogue about whether or not gay marriage is appropriate?
Whether, I don't think there was a discussion about gay marriage. I think it's more, I think the point is that, my understanding is, the point is being in support of people who are lesbian, gay, transgender, and bisexual. I don't think that there was, I didn't see any, anything in the song lyrics or in the video that is necessarily a political statement. It may have been used by political, you know, for political purposes, but I don't see that necessarily as a political statement. I see it as in support of various lifestyles that frankly are not seen by some people as appropriate either, so.
And just to respond to that, gay marriage is a political statement and has been a political statement for the last several years, whether or not that should be legalized or not. And in the video, I mean, in the song lyrics is specifically stated that the author of those lyrics wants to see gay marriage become law. So to me, that's a political statement.
I guess my concerns, Chairman, on this is, and I don't know because we don't really all have all the, all the information, but there seem to be many, many policies and procedures that weren't followed, that were discussed, that I guess at some point in time we'll have to pull them all out and read through them and determine whether or not they truly were not followed. But that's, again, been one of the things that the board has addressed through all the schools and through all the leadership of the schools, that following processes and policies, whether they agree with them or not, is their responsibility, and that's what we task them with, too. So I would hope that at some point in time, we can, we probably have to do it in non-public, but we can have the administration come in and explain to us how they felt these policies were followed or not followed, so the board can determine whether or not violation of school policies occurred. Because again, you know, they were very well articulated and we can all read through them and, you know, we've had discussions about what should be in and what should not be in the school, and irrelevant of what the day is, the fact is a matter is that we expect policies and procedures to be upheld by our administrators. Hopefully, we can get some time from our administrators in or for our next meeting or wherever, maybe we can get the policies that were referenced today emailed out to us. I think you sent us a few of them. And the board can put this on an agenda so that we can have a conversation determining whether or not, you know, where we feel this comes down. I would also have a request that you email your notes to Michelle so she can send them back out to the board so we can read through them and use them as a reference as we're going through this process.
Will do that.
I was going to ask him to do that, so thank you, John.
If I could just also add, if it's being put forth as a Day of Tolerance, again, that Day of Tolerance is for all lifestyles, and to hear that a student was singled out because his lifestyle was different is just wrong on many different levels, whether that lifestyle is a homosexual lifestyle, a heterosexual lifestyle, or transgender lifestyle, it should have made no difference. And for the administration to single out one student that put straight on his white badge is incomprehensible, in my opinion.
badge is incomprehensible, in my opinion.
I just want to say, first of all, our respect to you and your family and everything, 100%. We're probably on a different side of this issue, but I agree with you, we have to be tolerant of all lifestyles. I can't say whether that song was offensive to you. I mean, I'm not a religious person personally, so I can't say whether or not those lyrics were offensive. I personally like the song, whether it should have been played over the radio, I guess that's something we can talk about. But I think it's, it's important that the, the message of the day not get lost. It's about promoting tolerance of all lifestyles, and if it's promoting intolerance of, you know, Catholic woman-based, then that's not appropriate. But I think it's important that we, we do continue to support, you know, lifestyles and acceptance of all of our students, not allowing bullying in the schools. So I want to make sure that's not lost, whether or not it's through the students themselves or this Glisten, and however we do it, I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. I think that is, it's obviously very important.
Right, now I could just also respond, and I understand we may be on different viewpoints or issues with that, but the song, and now, I'm a Catholic. Baptism is one of the sacraments in the Catholic religion, and the song talks about the holy water that I'm baptized in, it's poisoned. If you ask any Catholic what that does to them, I'm sure you will get the same response. It is completely and totally offensive, and no matter how you shake it, a sacrament is a sacrament, and it's at the heart of the Catholic religion, and to somebody say that my holy water is poisoned?
I can see what you're saying.
And that's just one. I mean, and again, to paraphrase the Bible, to say that somebody's paraphrasing the Bible, to preach hate, I think is unfair to say, and whether you're religious or not, I think everybody knows how important the Bible is to any religion that has a sacred document that is at the heart of its tradition and foundations, and to say that that's paraphrased to teach hate, again, could be viewed as offensive.
Yeah, I think the problem is that there are lots of people that do use it to preach hate, is my guess. Obviously, not all, we're not talking about all Christians, but some do, and I think that's the unfortunate part.
But if that's somebody's viewpoint, to put that over a loudspeaker in a public education setting on a day that's being touted as, touted as supporting a day of tolerance is completely 100% inappropriate?
Are we allowed to comment?
No, this isn't, she's, she requested specific time on the agenda for this. If I, I can, if we can keep you entertained till the second community input, then welcome to comment, but.
I have to just say one more thing. I think it's important to remember that the song, the video, they're pieces of art, and whether or not you find art to be offensive or whether you find art to be thought-provoking or beautiful, I think is really in the mind and the eye and the ear of the beholder. You know, some people thought the Maplethorpe exhibit were porno, pornography, whereas other people thought it was beautiful photography. And I think, you know, here, it's really a judgment call as to where you fall on these issues. It's art, it's, you know, it's, it's, there's artistic license in expression and whether or not people find it offensive, you know, I think it's unfortunate if, if somebody does find it offensive, but, you know, I think it's important to remember at the end of the day that this is someone, someone's just personal expression, it's an expression of something, whether it's to provoke appreciation or deeper thought or anger. It's, it's the nature of art itself.
Right, and to respond, this wasn't an art exhibit, this was a day of tolerance, so if it was an art exhibit, I'd be more open to that type of logic and thinking and reasoning, but this wasn't an art exhibit. This was a day of tolerance with lyrics to a song that are inappropriate violate the viewpoint neutrality principle and specifically target certain groups who viewpoint is different from what was being exposed during Glisten's mission statement. So the idea that it's art is fine, but when it's put forth in a public academic educational setting, to me, that argument has no weight.
Well, this is a song I think that kids have heard, certainly, I think any of the kids in the high schools, certainly younger grades, I think are all familiar, very familiar with the song and with the video.
And I agree, they're familiar with it, but that does not mean that it is appropriate for CHS or the Litchfield School District to play it during announcements during a day of tolerance.
So you, you commented that teachers didn't speak for the entire day. It was the administration's position that the teachers had to teach and the students that chose to participate in the silence would respond if called upon. That was the expectation that the administration thought they set with all of the participants. That's what was explained to the board. Whether that happened or not, I can't tell.
I, I could tell you that expectation did not happen, and when you put, the school district puts itself in a position to have an event like it did, to allow vows of silence to occur during academic times, it puts itself in a position for those expectations not to be met, and they put themselves in a position where they're unable to enforce those expectations efficiently and appropriately. So going forward, to have a day of silence may be something that the Litchfield School District wants to consider not having.
Any other questions? Thank you. If you can, you can either leave the written ones or if you want to email the electronic ones.
I will email.
That's fine, thank you.
And again, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. School Board Member Comments?
I actually want to say I agree with some of the things Kathleen you said about leveling. I also have a third grader, and I, I didn't actually count the topics, but 33, now that you mentioned it, 33 seems about right. Happy for the year, just looking back and saying, what's going on? My daughter was doing fractions, she used, one of the exercises was producing fractions to the lowest common denominator. And I was thinking to myself, they spent about a month on multiplication, and third grade's supposed to be learn multiplication facts, and some probably are, but a month isn't long enough to memorize multiplication facts, and I'm not really sure how you do producing fractions when you haven't mastered multiplication or even learned division yet because division is supposed to come in fourth grade, so. I feel her pain, I have felt her pain.
Are you saying you struggle with the least common denominator, Derek?
Only the new way to do it, because it's not the same as I used to do it.
No.
But I, I don't know what the, I think we need to talk about plan to address it. I don't know if it's leveling, I don't know if it's more math tutors and more support in the classroom, classroom for math, but I, I think it's definitely a problem, I think it's something we probably need to talk about.
Okay. Nobody else? I wanted to congratulate the baseball team and the softball team, who won in the span of about six hours on the day after graduation, so people clearly exercised restraint after graduation, won the championship for Division III. And I also wanted to congratulate the high school for pulling off a, a graduation indoors when it's clearly much more comfortable outdoors. I believe they accommodated everybody. I didn't hear complaints about, there was actually empty seating in the gymnasium at one point, it probably wasn't the best or the most comfortable seating, but it certainly was not Feng Wei obstructed view seats, and I know there were some people that did the overflow into the auditorium that.
Cooler auditorium.
And the comfy seats.
There was definitely some people that opted that way, I'm sure, and I can tell you that it was warm in the auditorium, but I don't think it was, it was not an overbearing because it wasn't an overly warm day, but.
It wasn't 140 kids graduating, it was only 104.
Well, they, they, while it didn't seem rushed, it was about an hour and 40 minutes or so, and then everybody emptied out very fast, so. It was, I thought it was a well-done ceremony, and I'm constantly amazed by the students that speak, the, the words that they come up with, it's just truly amazing, so.
Great group of kids.
So now we're on to the technology report, which is including the tech plan, which is why, the second reason we have Mr. Hancock here today. So I actually sent the board a reminder this morning.
That was yesterday.
Was it yesterday? Maybe it was yesterday afternoon, to just go back and make sure that they were good with the, the plan and to send me any questions they might have so I could send them on ahead of time so you'd be prepared. No, I didn't hold anything back to sandbag you. I got a response from Janine that said she was fine, and then I got nothing, which either means people didn't review or they had no questions.
I have a question. How do you?
I tried, Kyle, I really did.
Mine are more, they're not questions about the plan itself, it's more about where certain things go. Like it mentions technical literacy, it mentions professional development, something I'd like to see is more advanced computer classes in the high school. I know, I've had interns at my work who graduated from Campbell, and I've asked them about the Campbell curriculum, and they, they laughed like they didn't know anything here, so like, should that be something that's addressed here, is it addressed with Kirk?
No, this is, this is a framework basically given to us by the state that we follow, and we have to kind of stay within that as far as addressing specific curriculum or adding courses or things like that, I think.
Okay, so technical literacy, it's more about the teachers having the luxury to be able to use the equipment to effectively deliver their curriculum. Do I have any questions then?
I know, we, it may not have been this time, but the last update, we specifically talked, we had questions about why we didn't include curriculum in there, and one response, which, you know, Kyle said is true, the other is, the curriculum changes and you don't want your plan tied in there. You know, you, something new and great may come along and somebody shows up and says, hey, I want to give you, you know, 500 iPads, but you said, no, we're going to use Samsung, you know, Android devices in the tech plan, now you've got to go back and revamp and revise and.
Yeah, there is a, a certain amount of effort that we put in to keep somewhat agnostic and from locking into specific.
You're in a perfect position to influence that, though, Derek.
I do have a question, I don't know if it's a plan question, but I, I had a talk with the VA about it today, and I remember reading, maybe it was one of Kyle's reports that you sent out last year, I tried to go back and find it, but it surprised me when, I believe we have 100 to 140 individual printers floating around our three schools. Does that close to right, Kyle?
It's probably in the plan somewhere that sounds pretty incredibly high to me.
Okay.
56 networked printers.
Yeah.
Is it 56?
I was going to say 60, but.
It probably is 60 now.
Anyhow, we had had a conversation when Steve was here, that they were putting school, big printers in each of the schools that were passcode protected so that if you printed them, you had to go do your login or whatever, so we printed it, individual printers were going to be going away. And, and so my, my concern is, is toner on those little computers or those laser printers or whatever they may be is not cheap, and it's much more economical to print off the large devices than it is to print off of the small devices. Thousands of dollars better, not hundreds, thousands of dollars better. So I, while I don't want to tie up the technology report, we probably need to come up with a plan that eliminates our desire, because they're not printing them in, they're not printing it in black and white, it's because based on toner usage, you're printing it in full color.
John, can I hop in for a second?
Sure.
We actually have zero or very close to it inkjet printers and probably less than 10 color devices in the district. And we've made a lot of effort over the last two years to start driving things into the copy machines, and even this year started implementing print release stations so that things can't go printed without being picked up. So we have made a lot of effort to move in the direction that you're talking about. And those printers, that, that number is everywhere throughout the district, that's administrative offices, computer labs, libraries, and, and common area printers that are strategically, like the, I'm thinking about the GMS first grade wing right now, there's one printer in that entire wing for them to use, and otherwise they have to go to the copy machine that's in the middle of the building.
Well, that, that's what I, I mean, if it makes sense to have two black and white production machines strategically located, in this case, GMS, it's still going to be cheaper than doing small copiers in two or three, four or five, however many were. They only have one for the first graders, they're probably one of the people that use more than the other grades. I mean, I don't, I don't know whether or not they're using it, but I know that we cut a half a million impressions one year from the budget, and it, nobody seemed to bat an eye.
I think they just went over.
Well, you know, I don't know, but, but, or they added machines that didn't get counted as clicks, just you had to buy toner.
John, the other thing I'll say, I don't know how many small printers there are, like we'll use GMS, but I can tell you, because I use the big one in there a lot, and that thing is busy all the time. And if there's one in the principal's office or in the administrator's office or, I think it needs to be there, I mean, I'm, again, I don't know how many are in GMS, but I can tell you the big ones are used all the time, and they're, they're busy. So if someone in the administration had to go to one of the large ones to release whatever they're waiting for, they may have to wait a period of time or.
No, there may be, there may be a need to have one in the administration, the front office for the administrators, and, and there may, you know, but I don't believe we need 56 small little printers.
That's not just small little printers, that's including copy machines.
So how many big ones do we have across the district that can print, you know, 100 pages a minute?
I don't think we have any that print 100 pages a minute, that's an easy answer.
So John, you're going to see that in the budget next year.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I mean, if you're going to buy a, if you're going to buy a machine.
They're probably, the copiers here are probably doing 10 pages a minute, maybe 20.
Then you got the wrong copiers.
They do around 20.
You got the wrong machines, you guys got to get some robust machines. If you got, we're doing 200, how many, how many pieces of paper?
So, John, I don't want to devolve into a discussion on the print capacity, which I respect your experience and knowledge immensely.
It's just a lot of money.
And, and I think it's a great conversation to have in October when Kyle brings.
His budget.
His budget, and we looked, or actually when Frank brings his budget, because Frank has the copiers.
I wasn't going to say that.
But I, it will be a conversation, so you can, you know, I'll defer till then.
I, I would say that strides have been made, and I think savings have been accrued. The demand is, if anything, increasing rather than decreasing, so, you know.
It all goes back to consumables, John. Let's have a conversation about consumables.
I think that would be outside the scope of the tech plan, it's just, you're meeting, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to go. So you had, you, did you have more than the printer question?
No, no, it was just on that. I thought the tech plan was very good.
I actually have a couple of questions, just simple ones. The smart boards, I'm hearing different conflicting stories that they're kind of like fading away, but it looks like they're staying.
Several years ago, when I came to the district, there was kind of the idea that maybe every classroom should have a smart board, and a lot of the, the equipment that we had here, we found was being somewhat underutilized. So we've kind of taken a step back from, from that vision and really trying to target more the people that are proactively going to trainings and, and going to be able to utilize the technology better, rather than just kind of blanketing specific classrooms.
So where you have them budgeted in, like at GMS in different schools, you already know where they're going specifically?
Yeah, so this year at GMS, we had one, one teacher who requested a smart board, attended the training for that, and it was included in the budget request, and she'll have a new board next year.
The other question I have, and unfortunately I don't have any information on it, Dr. Cochran, I don't know if you know or not, but I was, unfortunately I had to split my duties between CHS graduation and London Dairies because my nephew was graduating, but somebody may have mentioned, I believe it was the, I don't know if it was the superintendent or the principal, that they have a bring your device. I'm not quite sure how that worked, I know we, we keep talking about, you know, going that route, but I mean, so they have a program where students, and we talked about it.
London Dairies, you're talking about London Dairies?
London Dairies.
Oh, okay.
I think I read about that in a paper too.
I believe that they do. We actually have a device, a policy that permits, the district policy permits bring your own device. The schools are. The schools aren't necessarily as open to it. So we have a disconnect between the district plan and the school's desire, and if I could get Mr. Cooper to stop smiling, um, to make sure that students are not inappropriately asked, I think, I think at some point in time, we, we, I mean, it has actually come up at times in our committee meetings. And, uh, there's been a request, uh, for us to deal with it at a, uh, district policy level that basically says, here's the defaults for the buildings. And teachers then have the ability to, to make these decisions that are more in line with. So it's, to me it makes perfect sense for a teacher to say, you know, you don't have time to go run to the library, haul out your smartphone and Google the date of X. So what's, what's the, the, what's the default in the, in the building? And you could have three different defaults. And then what choices the teachers have in terms of inclusion or non-inclusion of the technology. And, and it's a conversation, quite honestly, that, that, uh, we need to have.
That's not a door you just open small. You open that door an inch, man, it's gonna, it's gonna fly right over.
We already have the guest networks here, which are widely utilized, just not within the classrooms.
Either in or you're out. I mean, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a gray area. You endorse it and you're in, or you continue to keep it at bay. Because if, once you begin to let it in, it's, the, the students will expand. Unless you can control the network very well, Kyle, they'll, they'll expand their, their usage of what it will be used.
One of the big steps was the, uh, the step we made this year to have, uh, we've had student logins at grades five through 12. And we've added that login as, uh, an email. And so we actually will have had internal email capacity for five through middle school?
Internal email, we have for five through, fifth grade through juniors and seniors are able to email.
Outside, outside the firewall. So, and it, it's getting there. The increase of the, of the switch to the student information system with learning management functionality is going to be another big step. But given that that's coming a year from September, this is the year that really have to get teachers using technology more, pushing things out to students more and making sure that we are, give teachers the, the functionality that they need to be able to, to use those resources well. But yes, it is, uh, it is an issue that we need to address. And the district policy does permit it. Either practice or policy, uh, has been to be concerned about that impact of opening that door a crack.
So I know we have, further down, we have a policy discussion. Is that a policy that's buried in 2017, 18 that we're pitching?
No, I think that's a, that's a conversation for the strategic planning retreat on July 23rd, 24th.
Cause I know we approved the policy when Steve was here.
Yeah, the AUP was approved.
Bring your own device was in there, cause I had a slew of questions that I sent out to Steve and Kyle. Cause I said, oh, look at this policy that says you can't connect. And I look at this policy that says you can connect.
Right.
So, Brian, another question?
No, I'm all set.
You good, Jenny? Is there a motion on the tech plan?
I'll make a motion to accept the tech plan as written.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you Kyle and thank the committee for us, for the...
Brian, were you just sending that out to the budget committee?
What's that?
The tech plan, how do we accept it?
They'll want to see it.
Should I send them or print it and like deliver it?
Don't print it!
Yeah, at least send it to them.
Send it to them with the budget numbers blacked out.
Those are my questions, I figured.
You guys have something to discuss. Well, you're done until August, right?
No, tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. Well, you guys have something to discuss.
And in case the question is asked, this, this, the plan itself is not a commitment. It's a, it's a plan, subject to funding.
No, no, it's a commitment.
So funding is quite the variance, I'm sure that...
Yes.
Yep.
Recycling?
Um, I assume you all got the memo I sent, just permission for us to recycle all of the old equipment that has no value and is no longer needed.
I'll make a motion to let them do it.
Any discussion? Other than, we had like six pallets last time, didn't we? I remember seeing them all wrapped up out here in the CHS parking lot. I'm like, what are we shipping? And I'm like, oh, it's like giant monitors, stuff like that.
Like last year, didn't they take it away for free for a certain period of time?
Same thing, we take it, they, they take it for free.
Yeah. Thinking if you plug one of those things in, it's gonna cost more in electricity.
Yeah, all those new lights we put in, those things are, you know, going away with the savings.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Anything else you want to say while you're here Kyle, when you have a captive audience?
Technology intern, I have down as the next bullet. We have a lot of things on the go.
That didn't make our agenda.
I'm sorry, I thought it did.
No, that's okay. You asked me and I said yes, but I clearly don't look for things in the missing.
We've hired one intern for the summer. Um, we have a ton of work to do. We have the GMS lab, we have the, the physical work, we have the electrical work. Uh, by physical work, I mean the, uh, the HVAC requirement. Um, we have the server. We have to get the, uh, how many thin planes do we have in the classroom?
Seventy.
Seventy in the building. So you've got three in every classroom plus the, the lab. We also have, uh, a new lab, uh, two new labs at, at CHS. The two high-end labs, uh, need to be replaced. And then those three-year-old machines will be cascaded to other parts of the building to upgrade six, seven-year-old machines, which probably should have been recycled a year ago. Um, those machines all have to be reimagined. We have the, uh, implementation of the fobs and, uh, security piece that Kyle has to manage that was passed in the, uh, warrant article. Kyle, what else am I missing?
Um, all of the routine maintenance and, and little things that we do all summer. Um, we're consolidating our nursing databases to avoid what happened this year again.
I'm sorry, you're...
Consolidating three individual nursing databases.
Oh, okay. I thought you said nursing and I was trying to figure out why we had multiple nursing.
One in each building currently, not on a centralized.
Okay.
And not backed up externally.
Routine upgrades, new mails, or upgraded mail server. I mean, we could go on and on, but I'm not gonna bore everybody with the list.
So, um, we'd like to, uh, bring in a, a second intern. The budget for, for about $3,000 for the base pay, of course, uh, there will be some additional costs. Um, and then we think that will get us on track. If not, we'd come back to the board and just say, look, here's, here's what we think we need in order to have all of this up and running for September. So, and it would be from the, uh, 14, 15 budget. So I don't know if we need board approval as it's a new position or...
I would think we would want to vote on it.
It's just a part-time position.
Yeah.
Part-time internship.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to okay a internship summer.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
Now we're done with technology? Now he can go home? He looks anxious. Most people in that seat are anxious to get out of here, by the way.
Close to the door, why do you think we're here?
It's the launching pad.
Something about that chair.
There's something about it. Thank you Kyle, I appreciate your time.
Thanks everyone.
I think I should make him stay.
Mr. Mark.
Shh.
Can I move over to that chair?
Yeah, yeah, leave it.
I provided the board unfortunately with a lot of information that came in. We were having some difficulty loading this all onto the website yesterday. But, um, I'll go over my memorandum that I prepared for the board and then answer any questions you have as I take them in order of the memo. What I tried to do this, this month is not to cut off, I know there was some concern about, we're late in June and if I provided May financials, I wanted to try to give the board and, as well as the budget committee, a perspective as to where I'm seeing the end of year numbers going to be. And as you know, uh, we still have a long way to go, even though June 30th is coming, is right around the corner. We've already, uh, planned to cut the budget and we've opened up this fiscal year 2015 to purchase orders. I want to give the board some indication of where it looks like it's gonna start to develop relative to the end of year financials. Uh, the general fund, as you can see, the current, uh, actual revenue right now is about 1.5% over projection. For a 20 million dollar budget, uh, that's not bad. Yeah, the number, the dollar number is approximately $288,000 that were over projection on, on the revenue side. And as I've explained before, those are probably two major areas, areas are impacting that number. Uh, the major of the two numbers is the LGC refund that came in of approximately $238,000. That was not in the budget, not, uh, it came in that those projections, uh, the projections were completed well before we knew what the amounts from LGC were coming in. And then also the Medicaid reimbursement right now is about eighty, almost $88,000 over projection. Uh, expenditures right now are approximately 1.8% under budget or $361,000. And the major component of that, of the other underspend for the expenditures is regularly, underspent by approximately 170. Special education underspent by approximately 119,000, school administrations, 65. Uh, those two, uh, and then the third, well, if you will, under the general fund is, as you've heard, 75% of our operating budget is salaries and benefits. Uh, right now, salaries and benefits around 73% of the total budget and 74% of actual expenditures. The salary and benefits has been overspent right now by approximately $96,000 in the two areas that are impacting the number of salaries for professional staff and the paraprofessionals. I'll stop after each one and answer any questions or if you need any clarification.
Michelle, do you need a minute?
I apologize.
No, it's okay, if you need a minute.
I'm nervous quite well, we've been here and there. You just give her a voice.
I'm so sick, I can't stop coughing.
I asked her if I needed a speed dial 911 earlier today.
I've been having a tough time the last few days. Thank you very much, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Uh, food service, uh, as you know, we've had a number of unanticipated expenditures in food service. Uh, the Pointless Heartland conversion software and the necessary hardware to go along with that, uh, as well as we needed to replace the one and only, um, steamer from the LM's middle school. Uh, actually went and we had no other option but to replace that as well. Um, my numbers, e-finance numbers, right now indicate that will be in the red, um, by around $34,000. However, I had a meeting today with the director of, uh, food service and we think that number's gonna come in around $12,000. We still have a number of revenues. Our expenditures have pretty much been posted into e-finance. Problem is that the, the revenue always lags in food service due to the reimbursement specifically from the state. Uh, Hilda seems to think we've got about 20 to 22,000 dollars that still needs to be posted into that. So we're hoping that the final number there, uh, optimistically will come in between the 12 and 15,000 dollars.
So we were looking at a being positive for the first time in a long time, probably four years, five years.
Had we not had...
Outside of the one time.
We probably had about $32,000 positive. Um, and I think that there are some major components to that as to how successful that was. The alacard, uh, sales, I guess, were, were extremely high this year based on past years, you know, a lot of promotion of those areas. So there'll, there'll be some coming in.
Do we need to, um, do we need to allocate money from the, the trust fund?
No, it automatically covers.
To cover this cost? It's a shortfall.
It's not a trust fund, you actually have in the food service, you have a balance.
I know we have a balance, yeah.
No, this would, this would, again, we just, it would be somewhat of a draw on that.
Okay, we don't, we don't need to...
No, no. Only, only if we were gonna over, over expend, if we needed to over expend for some reason.
So I said all of that money, then you would need to...
Cause this is gonna bring that, was this like eight, 70, 80?
76 dollars.
So this is gonna go down another $15,000 to $60,000. And then it, does that put us, don't we have to have a certain percentage?
They recommend you have three months.
Pretty much of operating, but, and we don't, we're not near that.
Yeah, but we're also gonna...
Probably one, a few districts in the state that has any, any balance, let alone pretty much reserved for operations.
Just a quick comment. We said last year, when we talked about pricing and changes and increases, that we've been dodging bullets left and right with having nothing to pay for except, you know, expenses of producing the food. And we've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment that is aging year in, year out. If, I mean, this year is the first year that we were able to cover the sorts of things like this. We really need to be planning, have that plan in place that says, we'll probably need to spend. I mean, large freezer at CHS would probably be in the range of $50,000 to replace.
Is this something we need to put in a, in the budget or as a warrant article?
Well, I've asked the director, uh, Hilda, you know, doesn't work 12 months, but she and I have already just had a discussion of the need to do similar to what you've passed this evening, a, a, a plan, a three-year plan or a five-year plan specifically for the equipment. I mean, it'd be, the steamer that we replaced at LM's used water and basically was, became corroded and the pan was falling apart. The new steamer, it's water. Don't ask me how that works, they'll just try to explain.
Where's our physics teacher when we need him?
Uh, but we had to not only bring in the equipment, but we had to do some electrical retrofits because it was just so outdated. So I think we need to bring, at least start working on a, at least a three-year plan so we can start bringing that to, not only to our attention, but to the budget committee's attention. So they see that we're going to need to make some improvements and, and not, I mean, we were, um, I, I tried not to buy the steamer. I asked if we could change menus and do we do things here. Hilda finally looked at it and said, we need a steamer for the middle school.
Give them fries every day, they won't notice. Oh, that's the high school.
We're looking at raising lunch prices though, I don't know.
Well, I think we have to raise prices this year anyway.
I think we're...
Because we gotta get to the federal, we're inching our way toward what the feds say we're supposed to chip.
Cause it's supposed to be like, what does it look like, like 265 or 270 or something?
I think it's 290.
It's a weighted average.
It was a dollar more than, more than a dollar more and we, so we added a nickel or dime at a time.
Two and a quarter?
I think we look at the numbers, I think.
I think we're 90 cents away from the maximum that we need to be at in three years, 90 cents a meal.
Yeah, but I don't think we'll ever get there in a year, three years.
We went 15 cents, I think, last year.
Was it a quarter?
It was a quarter.
It was a quarter. It was 10.
It was, it was a...
Maybe it was 10 or 15.
10 last year and then I think it was a quarter this year.
We, we will be doing that over the summer period, um, the recommendation on a, on a price increase as well as...
You know, they're gonna want better food.
You're gonna want less nutritious food. That's how you're defining better.
I think you'll see when, when the final numbers come, the food service, they did quite well with sales.
Do you know why? It's because they don't put the vegetables on the plate.
That's weird.
Are they, are they à la carte?
They're à la carte. I go there in the morning, I go to GMA's to eat lunch with my kids and all the plates have no vegetables. It's like they put like one in the corner with vegetables and stuff on it. I go up and say, well, the kids don't get the vegetables.
Little Dixie cup.
But parents get mad though, cause they read the lunch menu and it says they're gonna have a hot dog, they're gonna have beans and broccoli.
They're supposed to require...
And all they do is eat a hot dog. They don't even fun, they eat a hot dog.
They're supposed to require when they go through that line to the cat, to, to check out, they're supposed to have all of those.
I can see with my own eyes, the vegetables are on the plate.
Put the veggie, police patrol on it, on a notice on that one.
Our, we will experience...
I know they do at the high school, cause I've seen it. They make them go back and get their veggies.
Will, will experience the increase in trash removal that other schools have seen.
That's unfortunate what happens.
Throw it at each other, but they're not gonna eat it unless it's covered in cheese, which it's not allowed to be anymore.
Olive oil, garlic, who's put it, yeah.
The first student contract I'll take up, I see it on, uh, under, uh, further on in my presentation. The, the next page is, I again gave you an overview of, of where we're at, um, relative to, um, this current year. Um, and again, the, the total budget of, of approximately $20 million, 70, 74% of that is taken out by salaries and benefits.
by salaries and benefits. Again, we are one and a half percent over our projected revenues and 1.8% under our expenditures. That's a credit to all of the staff who are responsible, staff administrators who are responsible, the administrative assistants at each of the three schools who really keep an eye on the budgets and make certain that requisitions and purchase orders are issued prior to expenditures. So, it's a real credit to the, to the district that we're able to bring a budget in that is so close to, to expending and critical projections as well.
So, when you look at both of those numbers, we're sitting six, five days before the close, what's your total unreserved fund balance?
You're going to go there, Mr. Chair, and you, and I will answer that. If you take, if you take what we're over in projections, the 288, you add to it the underspend of 361, with some adjustments, you, that's, that's the, that's the computation, if you will. I will footnote, however, these are very preliminary, we're still, we got today over $3,000 of expenditures that we didn't have purchase orders prior to, so they weren't covered. So, you're, you're going to be getting adjustments. If I were to guess, I would say, again, 38 is a given because we can't expend that out. That's, that's the over, overage on the revenue. That drops right down to the bottom line. The area that will be adjusted, obviously, is that 361, 306. It'll probably be somewhere, if I were to guess, in the high 200 area, about $600,000.
$500,000.
And again, if you look at the components of that, 100 and almost 20,000 of that is special ed, which again, we have that soft agreement that whatever is the underspend on special ed, we do not move over into other categories. So, between your 288 and your 190, that takes up your lion's share of what we'll, we'll be seeing for our assigned fund balances.
That's, if my memory serves me correctly, pretty much the tax increase.
We had projected none, none going back to the town.
No, I understand, but I'm trying to think back to the default budget was 23 cents or something like that, plus the warrant articles.
Right. More articles.
I mean, this is going to be about 50 cents on the.
Yeah.
Maybe a little more, maybe it's, yeah, it's going to be a little more than 50 cents.
It depends what CATA.
I'm just thinking it's kind of a wash for the year.
It's real close.
Yeah, so that, so when, so yeah, there shouldn't be a real impact on the taxpayers for.
For the December bill.
The December bill, it should be pretty much.
And that will include the most significant in, increase of the cost of the contract yearly.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Whatever you might mean, whether you're listening or not. And please don't necessarily, past performance is not indicative of future results.
Well, I mean, if, you know, the. You know, the 281.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, you know, other than that, it would have been about $300,000. So, I mean, the 281,000, we're not going to get that again because I think they finally got LGC fixed and made all their adjustments.
We've got one more that's coming in September. It's around $35,000, so it's not.
And some of that 281 actually goes back to the employees, doesn't it?
No, that's the net, back to the district.
Ours was 238.
We've already paid out to the, yep.
To the employees.
We've already paid out to the employees. That's not coming back to us. I won't go over all of the detail, but there's some high charts and some charts doing a comparative of the 2014 to the 2015 budget, which you also have a copy in your packet. And as you can see, as we expected, it's flat by comparison. There's a little uptick in salaries from 2014 to 2015. There is a little bit of a downtick, if you will, in the, in the employee benefits, specifically in the health insurance area. I did provide to you, again, I'm sorry, this is all kind of being thrown at you, but the actual budget comparison for 2004, gave you a copy of that as well. And the, the important piece, based on the LEA contract, we anticipated to see a, an increase obviously in salaries and we were anticipating, we actually projected out a substantial decrease in health insurance. Salaries increased from 2014 to 2015 by 288,464, which was a 3.4% increase over projected actual, not the budget, but I did a comparison of a projected actual for this year, what we budgeted for next year. And that budget number, because we've been doing a lot of work at the SAU level, that, that also incorporates all of the open enrollment changes as well on this, on the health insurance side. Health insurance went down approximately $58,000. That is after open enrollment. We, we were able to input all the health insurance changes. We had, I don't have the exact number, but a substantial number of changes from plan of service down to the, over to the HMO, which again, we projected that a lot of, a lot of the staff were going to make that switch from the POS over to the HMO, which is the most expensive of the two programs.
You think it's going to be two, right? Because next year, it goes 25 to 84, 83.
Right.
The other thing is that we had, from the time we started negotiations until open enrollment, we had a $50,000 increase during this year.
Right.
So.
Right, we had.
That's part of the reason that we didn't accrue the savings, the projected savings that we had.
And that's the difficult piece to budget for, obviously, is the qualifying life events that occurred from the time that we projected what our cost savings would be with the new LEA. We had approximately, I think it was $53,000. We experienced changes. It sounds like a lot, but if you think about our cost for a health, for a family health insurance program, you're only looking at two, two and a half increase to the, to the, to a family life insurance policy that would create that kind of a cost back to the district. So, and those things happen. Again, the economy is such that we've had spokes lose, lose their jobs and the spokes here had to pick up the health insurance, so qualifying. And then through open enrollment, there were a significant number of changes again from the, from the POS over to the HMO plans.
So, the open access was not popular.
That would be an understatement.
Times may change.
Times may change, absolutely. And I think that's something you have to put on the plate that wasn't necessarily attractive today, but it may be down.
Let's just say it's a good thing we budgeted conservatively on the savings.
That number's not anywhere near what we thought it would be.
And that may change a little bit, up and down based on incoming new hires and their election of benefits. But all in all, it was, it came in at what was anticipated, moving up to the exact number of the strength, extreme on the health insurance savings. But again, there were a number of events that caused that number not to be realized. But had they not, I think we've been, we've been real close to our projection.
And that number does not include expanding healthcare beyond the people that are qualified for.
Correct.
So, no pair is added, none of that stuff.
Okay.
Because I, I read several articles about the impact that the healthcare laws having at universities.
Right. Other 29 now.
Well, I mean, there, so our pair is compared to their part-time or adjunct professors that now they're seeing, you know, it was like the University of South Carolina was going up like 2.4 million dollars in new healthcare costs, let alone whatever their increase was because they now had to cover additional groups of people.
That thing didn't otherwise, right?
It has salaries gone up 288,000, which is obviously the raise. That's just salaries though, it's not social security.
That's just salaries. That's the, that's why I put that number next to it that went in, that's the object code, salaries.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have any idea what other numbers, look at the total definitely?
For salaries and benefits?
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay. I was just curious how far off it was from projections. Because the health came in a lot, but savings weren't nearly as big as we thought, but the salaries number was much smaller than we thought, so it might have been about right anyway.
Yeah, because if, if memory serves me, we were projecting an increase in salaries of three, three something, I think it was 317 for some reason.
It was like four something, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The first year.
It was like 400 or something. And then a $200,000 savings, it became like 200.
But again.
That was everything.
But this incorporates changes of teachers who have left that may have been high up on this, on the scale that we're replacing with a second, third year teacher. So, again, that, that's why it's so difficult to project, because you're projecting that point in time.
27% for benefits, I thought, 21 or 22%.
For the total benefits.
As a factor for the total benefits on the salaries, 27?
21.81.
20, I thought it was 21 or 22. So, you're looking at.
At 60,000.
Another 60,000. It's, yeah, I think it's still lower, but.
We were pretty close. Again, had, had you taken out the like qualifying events, I think we would have been, not bad. Even from an accounting perspective, not bad.
Is that like a technical term on the business side? We were not bad.
Not bad. Yeah, that's not a real technical term.
Put that in.
The downside is we're very tight next year.
Yeah.
The $100,000, $150,000 cost between salaries and benefits made at the end of the two, last two budget processes has taken whatever slack was there.
That was the last place there was any.
Yes.
And these are real numbers too, and that needs to be emphasized as well. These aren't budget numbers that where we think we're going to be in two months from now. These are numbers we'll be able, again, to roll in, all those changes. We still have some new hires that come in place, but those are real, those are real numbers. Those aren't what we had anticipated.
Are those, are the new hires already in the budget numbers? If the, if the positions are open? No, no, I mean, if the positions are open, we're going to fill them.
Everything has been.
Or they are included in.
Everything's been, that's been filled so far.
We, we project, I think, MAST is 15, middle 16, so.
If we have, let's just say we have 10 openings. We, we've calculated these 10 openings at whatever we feel we would.
It will, yeah. So, they're in there. It's not like there would be a.
Not going to be something we now need to add.
No, 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 they're in there, it's just where they fall now within the slide that we.
So, you could have some fluctuations.
We could have some savings, we could have some additional, and hopefully it.
Hopefully it'll all. Even average out there.
You got it. Again, I gave you a copy of the fiscal year 15 budget. We needed to, we need to revisit. I brought forward to the board a few meetings back, a revision to the job description in the food service relative to the lead food service technician, not having any supervisor responsibility in any one of the three locations. And the question from the board relative to, I believe, one of the, the question that came from the board was, should those positions, both the lead and the food service tech be reasonably expected to lift 50 pounds? And we did, Michelle sent that over to our insurance, casualty insurance provider, Primex, who came back with the anticipated response, which in their, because they insure slips and falls and back injuries and those sorts of things, they would not recommend that one person be lifted, but yet in the, in the accommodation, we would, we would obviously have more than one person lifting that. So, and the job description does say that you may be called upon to lift something up 50 pounds and when you talk to the food service people, they go, we don't lift anything up. They call a custodian. Is the real answer.
So, does the custodial position say you'll have to lift?
Yeah, I don't know, Mr. Chair.
Based on the.
The potatoes are pretty heavy. They, they're not called upon too often. Everything comes in such a way that it's easy for them to move. And we don't have space, quite frankly, to be pushing things. The ones are going, yeah.
I was going to say, you're probably just in time of, just in time of process.
Right.
So, should, you need a motion to accept the food service recommended changes?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept those changes.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I. And the, the job descriptions of any of those approved?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the job descriptions as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Derek, you're going to have to flip this one.
Can I do it for all three?
Yeah, you can take all three.
B, C, and D in one time?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstained.
Thank you. The last piece of business under Business Administration report is the long awaited first student bus contract.
You have a DFA investment policy that you just had.
You have to reapprove the policy real quick.
Do we have to sign it?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to sign?
No, we just need to reapprove it. It's one of those auditing requirements.
I'll make the motion to reapprove the DFA investment policy.
So, there's no changes needed year over year?
No, I checked already with the auditors.
Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstained. Just make sure we stay liquid, Mr. Business Administration.
Oh, we're liquid. But it's liquid, almost instantaneous. Again, the first student contract I'm presenting this evening has gone through, giving you a little background, the first student contract, I believe, dates back to 2004. And it's gone through each, at the end of each term, a number of amendments. The contract itself, upon legal review, was found to be outdated and some of the recently enacted legislation relative to school transportation of public students needed to be incorporated. So, the legal opinion from the district's attorney was to just start anew, create a new contract, we'll incorporate all the new RSAs that need to be in there and so on and so forth. So, that is why instead of a, a new five, a five-year amendment being proposed, it's a, it's a brand-new contract, first student is on board with that, they agree with the concept of just coming up with a new contract. I provided you with a spreadsheet that was provided prior to, but now it has, we were able to lower the first year. First student actually came back with, with a 20%, I believe with a 20% increase year one. We were able to kick our feet a little bit and told them we were giving them a five-year commitment. We would like to spread that across that five-year period if at all possible. They came back with lowering year one and keeping year two, three, four, and five the same as their original proposal. So, the regular and special ed daily rate per bus will increase in year one by 15% from its current rate of 229.42 per bus to 263.83 or a $34.41 increase. And you can see from year two through year five, thereafter, it will increase 5% each year to at the end of the term of the contract, per bus rate would be 320.68. Similar increase in the late bus going from 43.40, it will increase 18% in year one and 5% thereafter year two through five.
How many late buses do we have?
One at each school. Well, one at LMSS and CHS. I don't know if there's a late one at GMS.
Yeah, I think there's, there's one at GMS as well. Yeah. I can double check.
I believe there's one bus that services LMSS and GMS, CHS. Because my son would take it and he would come here and pick up students and.
Oh, maybe it is.
And then go home. And I don't believe I've ever seen a late bus at GMS. I don't believe that.
Most of the kids are there.
Kids are either in after school or they come home on the bus when it's done.
I'll check on that one.
The only thing might be, I thought they did like chess club and a couple of things after school that maybe occasionally there is.
Yeah, that's separate from.
It's not school activity.
It's what, I think it's 315, I think it's 315 pickup at LMSS and 330 pickup at CHS. And then, for the late bus and then it, then it goes. And I think that is an hour after the school, each school ends.
It just drives wherever it needs to drive.
It, it's got a route.
It runs around.
My son gets home, it drops off at four o'clock when he's on it, so.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, drives through Litchfield and drops off at one or two, so I guess. I, I, one thing I didn't see, I know that Michelle had given it to us on reports of, of things that required in one of these policies I printed out, it required that the drivers of the bus be have drug testing. In Article eighteen. Yes, it is, but in Article eighteen, it doesn't mention drug testing at all on the bus drivers. It says they have to, uh, meet all requirements of state of New Hampshire, such as, but not limited to, annual physical examination and criminal record track, including fingerprinting, but nothing about a drug test. And I know it says, but not limited to, but since it's a state law, I would have thought that that would have been something that would have been written in the contract, that they had to be drug tested, or whatever the language is for the state should be in here.
I think it's a citation of the RSA.
I didn't, I didn't see it under Article.
I do know that, that First Student is actually compliant with that from experience in a prior district. This shall remain unnamed.
It's on twenty-two, John.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Compliance with applicable federal and state laws.
Okay.
Carrier shall comply all times of all federal, and then it's got New Hampshire RSA, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, so, so our, um, our attorneys are okay with that language?
This is the attorney's document.
Okay, I, because we're going to be asked to modify our policy to reflect that they're being tested.
Well, it'd be a separate policy.
Well, no, but, but understand that, but, but we're signing a contract that doesn't specifically say that. I understand it says the RSA, but we were, in the beginning of that article, it was very specific of saying you have to do these things. I'm just saying that if we're going to make a policy or accept a policy that says all of our bus drivers must have that, that's not only a policy, if we decide to hire a bus driver at some point in time, that would, should be a policy that's in our, in our contracts, but I'm not an attorney, so I won't even play one on the school.
The remainder of the financial summary I provided with you too. I gave you a, um, kind of an idea with some of the other districts. I think it was to Litchfield, and as you can see, it ranges anywhere from.
Man.
Which is not on, wasn't a surprise to see Nashua.
Yes, just ranging.
Nashua coming in a little bit higher. As you know, First Student provides service out of their, um, location. Between Nashua, Litchfield, and Hudson. And the range goes as high up as a variation of fifty-four point six percent and to our good friends in Wyndham and Pellum. And I believe that their contract there calls for, it's almost an hourly rate instead of per bus daily as we have. It's, it's one of those contracts that when the bus hits the road, it's on the clock. So it's averaging around that four hundred, four oh seven per day, per bus.
I do, I will let you know that Salem is leading a, the SAU in Salem, their superintendent, Michael Telehunte, is, uh, working with Wyndham, Pellum, Derry, the Timberlane School District, and, um.
Duke.
Working to create a massive Southern New Hampshire bus district where a, a, a larger bus company might come in because they have such a large area that they would now be servicing instead of individual school districts. And I think some of the, I think Salem's signing a, a two-year agreement or something, because I, it looks like it's going to take three years to come to a process where it can occur because of different contracts that are in place. And, um, I had mentioned it to Frank last time we had met, and I talked to Mike about it again, but it, it is something that, uh, it's going to be a work in progress for them as, you know, over the next, because the feeling is the same thing, you know, First Student, we're not, they're not, they're not big enough to get, like, get a large company in here, but if all of a sudden you needed a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five buses across, you know, eight or ten towns, somebody may think that's lucrative. And, uh, so, you know, my, my recommendation was to try to see if we could do this as a three-year agreement to see if that occurred, but Frank said that would cost us all that money upfront. So maybe one of those things that, you know, we're in it for five years, but, um, I, I think that, I think all the other districts are, are looking at the same thing. I mean, you know, they're all paying, well, Wyndham, however, you know, they're subsidizing the rest of us, I think, but, uh.
Thanks, Steve, next time we talk to him.
Yes, we will.
I'm sure he didn't negotiate that contract, and I'm sure he's not happy with that rate.
Uh, did it on both? Wait till he hears what my, I haven't disclosed my rate yet to him.
Can you tell me how we go on negotiations next time?
Well, not necessarily.
So Frank, I want to thank you from the board. You clearly put a lot of time into this and have taken what could have been a very bad budgetary situation and turned it into what I, at least for the first year, what I believe we thought would be a good deal, if we could get to fifty percent from where we were.
Right.
And then to see that we actually beat Nashua.
And I will say with First Student, they, uh, they came in their first proposal a bit high, and they knew it was rich, and they were trying to recover some, um, past.
Money.
Sins.
Yeah, so we kind of agreed that maybe First Student didn't handle the, the bid process and putting in numbers that, but we, we felt that as a district, we shouldn't pay for that, that that was something that they needed to kind of realize, that we couldn't absorb a twenty-five percent increase and feel that we, we wouldn't, that wouldn't necessitate some major changes. So they worked with us, but we, thank you, and it was, it was some good input from everyone on that.
Motion to approve it?
Yes.
Take a motion to approve the First Student Contract?
Any other discussion? All those.
Great job on that contract. I'll print off a high copy at the end of the meeting if you stand.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Thank you.
I think that's it, Mr. Chair.
I think you're, you're done, but you can't leave yet.
Do you want them to sign this one?
Sure, if you have a, yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
We need a blue pen or a black?
Do we all have to sign?
Yes.
So you're done, but you can't leave? Because you're not in the seat.
Even if I were to move over?
I think that's blue.
This seems to be the transient jab.
Committee reports, if anybody met. I know you said budgets tomorrow.
For meeting on the eighth.
For buildings? Perk is done for the year?
Perk, we're gonna meet in August over plan.
It's gonna be, but we're gonna have a plan.
Everybody's coming to plan.
Bellings and grounds has a meeting coming up on the eighth.
Eighth, yep. We gotta work on a agenda.
Is that the final enrollment plan or the enrollment, Dr. Hook?
This is the final enrollment report. Same pattern as last year, marginal increase over the, uh, the school year. Nice to note that the pre-K program only gained five during the school year, so that's a good thing.
What's the growth capacity they can get to?
Not sure, not sure.
For pre-K.
I think that's.
Probably.
Close to the max right there.
I think they have, I think we were higher than that last year. The only potential red flag is that first grade registrations are now at seventy-seven. An addition of seven students, the pattern has been, we lose more kids over the summer than we gain during the year next year. And if that pattern holds, then we'll have plenty of capability for four first-grade classrooms. But if we pick up seven more first graders, that would give us four classes of twenty-one. And we're moving forward with plans of turning that classroom into a lab in anticipation.
Don't we have four classes scheduled?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're only getting worried we need a fifth class.
Correct.
If we get seven more, we're okay.
It would need an anomaly, but.
Would need thirteen more kids, ninety, for really to get.
Well, the policy with, the, the, the threshold is, I believe, eighty-four, because that would give you an average of, of twenty-one as opposed to the twenty, which is the goal. So there are some other things that you can do if we hit that number in terms of, of para-support or things like that, but.
Yeah, I could get the room back.
Yeah.
It's on its way.
We'll just bump kindergarten to thirty.
Yeah, you're gonna have to start watering that building and see if it'll build an addition or something.
There's plenty of water in those.
That's true.
I'll tell you, the place that's going to be interesting in CHS.
They gotta go back to private students.
They're gonna gain thirty kids, pretty, pretty close to that, depending how many decide to go private out of, uh, eighth grade and the freshmen, but, so, if, if everybody moves, they'll have a freshman class of one forty-one and a junior class of one forty-five.
And there'll be two years of that, of, of, of big group, and then a drop, and then two years later, another big drop.
Yeah. So graduation in two years is going to be longer.
Average class size is projected at about nineteen, but we have more than last year in terms of, of, uh, classes that run. Remember the report that I showed a while ago?
Beth, are there questions on the enrollment?
Notice on the reports, they always show kids transferring out, but they never, they used to show kids transferring in. Is there a reason why they stopped? And they used to surprise with, you know, every month where the students came in and came out, so we could see what was, what was occurring, you know, where the kids were coming from. I know, you know, we can see where they're going out, but.
Yeah, they used to be there, you're right, John.
But they don't, they, they, they seem to stop sometimes through this year, so.
But we know we gained kids.
And now.
Maybe there haven't been any gains since.
Well, from the report that has.
No, but maybe we had all of our gains early and we just had losses. I don't know.
So it's just something that you can have the administrators, whoever's managing that, they could.
There was definitely a gain in first grade between February and now, so, but it's been. Authority to sign? We typically do this every year.
I make a motion to the superintendent and business administrator to sign all office of business management forms, all conducts, and all grants, and we have to.
I'd like, since we're meeting twice in July. A lot of meetings, yeah. We only did, when we met, only once in August we did that, but I don't understand why.
This isn't, this isn't the one to give authority to hire. This is for signing contracts, like leases and things like that during the year.
It's the start of the new year.
Right.
Start of the new year.
Okay.
Will you second it now?
I will.
Any other discussion, since John had all his discussion before the second?
That's it.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Michelle, you put there on that.
That, that one you're talking, that talking, when you're talking about comes later and later on.
Oh, E E A G.
The only change in E E A G is reference to E E A G R. We have different versions of the form, of the approval forms floating around. Some of them have been, had whiteout applied to them and lines added, and one of them, there's no place for a signature for approval, so we want to kind of reel that in. But because, uh, the board does not have to change or approve the, the Rs, but you do have to change a policy, which adds a reference to the procedure. Uh, there are, these are the forms as they exist now. Note at the bottom, it, it says signature of superintendent. That probably needs to be changed to superintendent or designee. And we also have to find out historically, do we have some, some, uh, standing arrangements for designees? So for example, um, for co-in extracurricular activities at the high school level, you know, probably no reason why the athletic director shouldn't be able to act as a designee on some of these forms as opposed to going, okay? Because oftentimes, it's, it's relatively, uh, short-term notice. So we have to have some sort of, of guidelines on, on what sort of designations and to whom, so that these can be handled in, in a manner. And the other thing that we have to look at is, uh, storage and annual disposal of the personal information related to license and car insurance. There's, there's a lot of, of, of private information there, and I think we need to establish some procedures about how we handle that stuff.
So a question came up about use of a van to transport students, so like golf or spirit, going to competition. Right now, we have a bus. The bus comes, we put eight golfers or whatever the number is, and they truck to wherever, and it costs us whatever. I know a while back, the state passed some kind of law for, the Department of Safety had a clarification that said you gotta have either the commercial license or the school bus driver license.
Step up from the regular.
Is that still the case?
Yes.
So if.
And if the van's authorized to, to hold more than one, I believe, I haven't looked at that reg for a while, but.
So if, um, the athletic department looked at the golf thing and said, hey, it's gonna cost us eight hundred dollars in buses this year, but we can rent this van for the term of the season, and it's four hundred dollars, and I don't even know what the numbers really are. We just don't know what the, I know that there was the, it was absolute at one point, even if it was two kids, it had to be.
Had to be.
Had to be a school bus driver.
I'll look that up for you.
I'm just saying, as we look toward the budget, that might be something we want to consider, since the rule seems to have changed over the past couple of years.
It, it's something that, um, in a past life at a vocational high school, we actually went out, my department, head department had, went out and solicited the formation of van from one of the car dealers, and we were able to transport students, covered, we were covered under liability insurance, and, but then the law changed in Massachusetts similar to up here, and then we needed a special endorsement, but it was still very cost-effective. It's something we might want to consider.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Especially for small groups, um, robotics team, the golf team.
Yeah, exactly, where they needed to have a bus, they needed to raise money and.
It's crazy that we spend that kind of money that on a seventy-one passenger, when you're traveling with twelve kids, and it's far more convenient. You can, it gives you more flexibility in scheduling. It's, it's something that we, I think, is a great idea.
I'm channeling Pat Jewitt right now, for anybody that, remember, this was always Pat Jewitt's crusade was, we just put four kids, and the bastard holds whatever number and.
Seventy-seven.
That's.
That, we can't control that, but we can, the extracurricular, we can certainly look at that.
Why don't we, um, task, look and get by and get used.
Well, I mean, so, so that was, that was the question that the, the athletic director asked, can you do it? And I said, so I just know what the rule used, used to be, and you should talk about it, because I don't know if it's changed. If it has changed and it's cost-effective, then it makes sense.
Well, I've seen teams show up, or at least buses paid their, I don't know if they're hiring that a bus driver to drive it, but it's their, must be their bus.
You're probably thinking about Bishop Brady or Trinity or Portsmouth Christian Academy.
Right.
That are private schools that don't have to live by.
Right.
Those, those rules.
Plus if you get.
Which seems grossly unfair, but that's.
Well, I mean, I, I do believe that if it makes sense for us to, uh. You know, I hate to be in the bus ownership business, but, you know, I was out just, I was, I was thinking about this because you were referring this. I went out and just, you know, Googled buying buses. I mean, they were buses, you know, eight years, five years, seven years, ten years old that were for ten thousand dollars, that, you know, I don't, you know, I'm a mechanic, I'm not a mechanic, but, you know, I mean, if you can buy a bus for ten thousand dollars, it's in pretty good shape if you, you know, there's a couple of mechanics in town or whatever.
But then we're in the bus business. You don't want to get the bus business.
No, I understand that.
That's not a cost-effective.
But, but it, but it's not, it, you know, again, if you take a look at those prices, you know, it, you may behoove us for, I'm, I'm not for driving kids to school, but for the sports or for the arts and stuff like that, it may make sense to have a bus or to, for those programs, because it is more cost-effective.
Or even if, I mean, the bus, or if you can get a van, if you can get a fifteen-passenger van, because I know they've run into issues where there's a sporting event or something going on, and there's SATs or PSATs or an art show or a music thing. The problem is, if they could leave immediately after the event was over, they could get back to do their second event. But they can't guarantee that.
Use a lot of flexibility.
But if they could say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take the bus, the van or the bus or whatever this is up, and we're gonna take these. But if they could say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take the bus, the van or the bus or whatever this is up and we're gonna take these seven kids and bring them back to participate in this other activity, I think, looking at it from that perspective, as well as small groups, being able, the robotics can get on, I mean, you gotta have room for the robot, but.
Get the fishing team too.
The fishing team, there we go.
Don't forget about the fishing team.
And the, what is it, the, the fishing team and, uh, what's the other one we added that was, uh?
I, I can tell you that the tech school owned a good number of vehicles, were constantly in the shop.
Yeah.
Um, and I can tell you that my donation included them taking care of all the maintenance side. So anytime something.
Well Frank, you've got, maybe you could work a little magic.
I can.
With your negotiation skills.
I may wanna drive the van at least once a month, just to make sure it's operating properly.
So on these forms?
Won't tell you where, but we'll, we can work through that.
It's legal, Frank. We don't need to read about you in the paper.
There's one here that has parental transportation consent agreement. That needs, it says superintendent approval. Then there's one that says student self-transportation consent agreement, that you don't need to see. Same form.
And that's the problem.
Only thing is you're removed from it. And I do believe that both of these forms are in direct conflict with the ski policy, which says you're not allowed to drive yourself from Pats Peak and from the high schools, and that's the only grade we're looking at. You have to be driven by your, by a parent. You're not allowed to drive your car up there and participate in ski club. I just happened to be on C H S website today and that was on page, so I clicked on it. So we, this would be, if they spilled this out, would be in conflict with the ski club policy as it is today.
I believe we corrected that as of last year. It was not a popular decision, but as of now, all of the parents, I met actually with the two new incoming people at G M S on the policy. They're going to, uh, uh, put this out to all of the parents. It, it took multiple meetings over the fall and we brought the three schools into alignment. And the area of controversy is that the policy on transporting children, you can transport your own child, you cannot transport someone else's child, period. And what was happening in violation of the policy was people were carpooling. And the policy stipulates that that's not allowed.
So same policy?
Same policy, the same policy.
I carpool the people.
Same policy. But if you are transporting your own child, you've signed an agreement that says you're, that, that you're aware you're physically responsible and that if you're transporting somebody else's child, if you're in an accident, you're the one who's violating the policy. So it's a risk assessment piece.
So when you say carpooling, Derek and I wanted to go together with our kids to ski, we're not allowed to do that? 'Cause he's driving and I'm riding with him?
That's interesting, there's, there's another.
But if you're not there and he's taking your kids.
Okay, it's only if my kid is driving.
Be in direct supervision of your child and the, and the other will be held as basically the way the insurance.
Literally next, I work next door to McIntyre, I have to drive all the way to the show, get my kids and drive all the way back to it.
No, you can meet in there if they take the bus.
Take the van.
But G M S doesn't have a bus, so.
Derek will take the van.
That's right, G M S doesn't have a van.
There's another logical, uh, oxymoron here, and that is, somebody can come to the school and pick your child up after school and drive them home, but not if your child is after school at an extracurricular event.
Now that's pretty valid, that's a harm.
So trying, trying to explain this to multiple extremely well-intentioned people who are, tend to be rule followers was, was difficult last year, but we smoothed it out. People are aware that they're, if they're in violation of, of the policy, they've signed it, they provided all the information, they know that they're in, in violation of that policy.
So is ski, is a ski club a school sponsored event?
McIntyre, Pats Peak, Pats Peak requires that you register as a, uh, school event in order to get the reduced rate. And my understanding is that that's because they want the students covered by our liability, not theirs. McIntyre is not, so McIntyre can actually run under a different set of rules, because you as a parent can just say, let's grab these kids and take them together, so it's not school-sponsored.
So G M S is not.
It's a community.
Not violating the rules.
So.
Derek, turn around.
I have to say, the, the people who.
Just head to McIntyre.
The people who do the organizing have been wonderful, I explained to them, here's the policy, here's what it's trying to do, you know, here what, here's what the expectations are, here's what the expectations are not. If someone is in violation of the policy, it's not your job as a ski club person to be, you know, the, the police of the parking lot and see, you know, follow kids, go to the parking lot and see. If, if someone is in violation, they, they know they signed off on a document that says they won't do something and they've done it. So. And that I think is the intent of the policy.
The other way to, to solve that also is to try to make sure that we have, uh, buses that are adequate enough to do L M S, because L M S seems to have the bigger set of students, but, and, and I know they, they did pack their bus fairly quickly last year, so. You know, that may be one of the things that we, needs just be, you know, reviewed and taken a look at, so.
So you want approval tonight, or you're just?
Uh, if, if you can, uh, approve the policy tonight, there's some revision work that needs to be done on the, uh, procedures and I will just, as an F Y I, over the summer, bring back those changes and.
So these E R G forms, these are school-specific forms, is that correctly, that you'd be going to the administrators of the schools?
The, uh, the E E A G Rs?
These four.
Those are specific to the mode of transportation.
But, but they're specific to the administration of the schools. What I'm saying is, shouldn't, this shouldn't be sent to you, this should be sent to the principals.
What we need to do really is work out a, a consistent set of
Procedures.
Of procedures. Most of the time, it, they come to me, but not always.
But why is the S A U involving themselves in something that's.
Well, a lot of times, but it requires having the insurance on file, making sure that's correct.
But that, but that should be a school admitted, I mean, well.
Previously, the previous business administrator wanted to verify that we had all the information before he permitted it to happen, because the district has the deep pockets of everybody involved in this equation and wanted to make sure that was all lined up.
Well, I would agree with that.
So that's why it had to come through the S A U.
But it, but it should, it should go to the principal, mostly this is the principal of the high school. So it should go to the principal of the high school, who's this person here, who that should sign it, and then it should go to the B A to take a look at and make sure that the attached documents that reflect the insurance are correct.
You also wanna say superintendent or designee, because if you say principal and the principal's not here.
Yeah.
We, the principal typically doesn't designate the superintendent to sign, so you wanna start at the top and allow yourself to work down. But yes, I agree, John, that the principal should be one of the designees, that from each of the principals should be a designee.
Or you're saying the athletic director, because it could, more times than not, it could be at a sporting event that they're signing one of those things.
You might want, you might want, uh, the band director at each school to be a designee, I'm just saying, you just need to figure out what that list is.
When we first, when these, when the situation came to light, it was going to, I was concerned about two things. Consistency across the three schools and not wanting the principals to be the bearers of bad news. They're the ones who have to work with the teachers, the students, the parents more so, so if somebody was gonna be the person causing the change, I thought it would be better from that function for it to be me.
Or your designee.
Well, but in, now that we've got it in alignment, I think it's okay to designate it back out, but when you're forcing a change like that, I, I think it's, you, you wanna protect the working relationship that the principal has with parents, students and staff. So that was, that was my rationale for keeping it centralized up till now.
So what does it say, it has to be the parent that drives it?
I'm sorry?
Derek's worried.
It's not, I think it's in this one here.
It's in the procedure.
It's on the policy. Policy says they can't drive themselves.
No, it's, I think it's in it's.
No, there's a, there's a clause there about a parent not transferring, affording a student that is not their child.
In the case may a parent transport another student who was not their child.
The policy covers the, the three areas. Maybe we should.
Is there a reason that has to be there if a parent signs off on it? Like, is there a liability reason, like why, why can't I say my neighbor's gonna pick up my, my, my neighbor's dismissed my kids all the time, I guess.
I know, I know.
So can we remove that from the policy?
You're the board, you can do whatever you want.
Is there a legal reason though, I guess, is there a primex reason for doing it?
I would think that'd be a liability issue though, because a school, if the school is releasing a child to another adult.
But in order for them to release it though, I as a parent, write a note saying, I'm dismissing my daughter Riley to X X X at the end of the school day.
So, so part.
Different situation than this is.
Part of the discussion is, um, just, how to say delicately, um, two-parent situations where there's a custody agreement. Where Johnny stays with mommy and mommy sends a note that says, dismiss Johnny to me today, but it's not her day, kinda thing. And you don't want the administration from that perspective put in the middle. Well, I think primarily what we're trying to do is with the district policy and it's from the, looking at it from the coach's viewpoint, it's far easier to have everybody get on the bus at the beginning and everybody get off the bus at the end, without having to worry about Joe has a note, Jane has a note, Frank has a note and Bobby has a note.
They would rather not have any notes.
They would definitely.
And primex would rather see if from a primary liability standpoint, we're responsible as a school district. Once you sanction it as a school district activity, we are responsible to transport those students to and from. And once you start making exceptions to that, and if those exceptions can be varied, then you really got some issues.
And you run into, 'cause I've been to more than a few sporting events. You run into the parent that suddenly wants to claim their child. And if you don't have the policy to say, this is, no, you didn't do that.
They come, they come on the bus to the event, they must return back to the school.
Clearly, nothing, nobody could ever stop a parent from taking their child, there would just be consequences on the backside for the policy. Yeah, you can do that, but you know, they're not playing the next game, they're not traveling, whatever. The, the A D or the athletic group decides to do, but.
This is more for, for sporting events, so.
It's that and the co-curriculars, the band, you know, you go to the band thing and, and they all wanna bail out. There's clearly extenuating circumstances, if there's an injury and somebody needs to go in the ambulance or needs to go to a hospital right away and a parent's gonna transport their child, that's clearly an exception. So. So do we want to prove E A G?
P E A G.
E E A G, E G.
I'll make a motion to approve E G.
Second, is there a second?
Derek's not seconding it. Derek's not gonna second it.
Any more discussion?
He's gonna abstain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Come on, man.
That was a Trish eye. A little delayed, I had to think about that one. Reluctant.
That was, that was, that was a me eye right there, a me eye.
And you'll bring our back once you, the procedures back once you move them a little.
And we'll meet with building administration and ask them, you know, how we want to, to do the, sort of the, the standing designees.
Okay. Policy revision summary memo. There's only two hundred fifty-six policies, I swear there was twelve hundred when we.
No, there's not twelve hundred.
Don't you, John?
I do, I mean, I came in at the end, but it still seemed to take forever.
We still have the old policy manual too, so. Um, what I basically did was gave you a breakdown of how the policies were approved in the district over, over the last ten years. And, um, the number of policies, as you can see in two thousand nine, we really were working on policies, so I can understand why Dennis doesn't wanna go there again. In two thousand ten, we proposed a policy revision cycle that was a five-year cycle. That, we completed that this year, so we kind of are ahead of ourselves. So what I did was I went through, Dr. Cocker and I went through the policies that are required by law, compared them to the policies we already have. And we have a whole list of policies that we, uh, would like to bring forth over the summer. There's not that many, just a handful, really, maybe about eight or nine, that we have to look at to include in our policy manual and a couple that need to be revised or amended. So we recently did that, I recently did that policy research and compared that with the manual. And, uh, we, I came up with another policy revision cycle that's a little more comprehensive for you, two-year cycle where I do mostly all the work. And then it repeats in two years, and if anything has to come up, uh, for the board revision, I'll make sure that the board is supplied with all that and the board can give direction on wanting to do it in one month, two months, over the summer, however you wanna do it. So that's basically what this all says, I also gave you, I updated the list of the policies we have that have been approved and broke them down by category. And we do have a couple of drafts of policies, especially, specifically the background investigation and criminal record check, that we did draft a few years ago that we never quite got around to. So we do, actually, one of them that is required by law, we do have a draft that we can, uh, we can work on. So basically, we're looking for board direction and approval on the revision cycle if you'd like to give it.
There's your school bus drivers, John.
Yeah.
Yep, there's your school bus drivers.
I was reading this, which caused me then to go look at the contract.
So I hope I didn't confuse you too much with these things here.
Just this policy would be enough to stay out of the bus business, right? Just so you know, I mean, it's six pages long. Just to hire four bus drivers.
Well, that's, that's basically the sample policy provided by the N H S B A, we're gonna, we're gonna research other districts and see what they have. Might be a shorter policy, you never know.
Did you need, you don't need to vote to approve the process?
You do not have to vote to approve it tonight if you don't want to, you can take your time and look at it and decide what, if you would like to do these over the summer, we are gonna start bringing some forward for you to look at over the summer.
I don't know that there's a better plan than what you presented, Michelle, and the only way you figure anything out is by trying it. I just know I don't wanna go back, I look, you did seventy-three the last year.
Well, that's why.
That was horrific!
That's why I offered to take. That's why I offered to take the brunt of the work off of you.
So this is the policy, this is the process we're gonna follow?
That is the process that I came up with, yeah.
Very good.
And I don't think, it's, it, you know, to tell you the truth, over the last four years, when I was monitoring the rest of the policies with the help of my friend, uh, Barrett Christina, uh, over at the N H S B A, we, he was really, he was really very instrumental in helping me with that. We came up with changes that were so incidental, they weren't even, you know, worth bringing forward. That's basically why.
We added the letter R.
Yeah.
We added the reference to the procedures.
So I think that in fourteen fifty, you have us actually going to be reviewing thirty-one, forty-six, almost a hundred policies.
Well, I'll be, I'll be actually reviewing them and I'll bring them, I'll bring forth any ones I think should be revised.
You're going to review a hundred policies?
I'm gonna do that.
So we may or may not have to review that many.
You may not. You may just have to pay me a little overtime, you never know.
My guess is, my guess is we'll be in the, in the, in terms of a review, fifteen plus or minus five.
What I would suggest though, Michelle, is the, even the ones that we're not gonna revise, bring them forward as a group.
Maybe approve them as a whole.
And we'll just say that, and then we can add a review date, you know, that they were approved in two thousand seven and they were reviewed in two thousand fourteen. Because who knows how long the five of us will be here and somebody's gonna look at it in five years and go, so nobody looked at this for twelve years.
Right, those are some of the things that we said.
Wait, this says nineteen seventy-seven. It was clearly written on a typewriter.
Yeah, those are, those are some of the policies like that, that, um, non, uh, the residency one. That really needs to, it really, that's one we really have to work on.
That only talk about the two schools. Yes, the, at the middle school and the elementary school, these are the policies that are.
Well, you know, Dr. Cutler and I, we went through that old policy, we got rid of a lot of policies that were like outdated and antiquated.
Yeah, there's the great days when you got to actually, what's the, whatever the. Yeah, there's the great days when you got to actually, what's the, whatever the legal term.
Rescinded.
Rescinded, I was gonna say decommissioned, but that's what you do to a ship.
They rescinded about 40 or 50 policies, so.
Okay. I think that's a fine plan, unless somebody from the board wants to come up with a better one, but I'm thinking nobody wants to do that.
I'll just say board consensus.
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
You guys, wait, you should do all this work, and then we'll have an hour discussion on the word duh, and that, and shoulds, and whatevers, and shall.
Might.
That's right, we have an attorney now.
I have to leave, see, Janine, I have to leave things in there for them to do, that's why I do that.
Well, that was, there was one word that, if it was in there, it had to come out.
Must.
Must or, or shall.
Will.
Will or.
No wills, gotta have no wells. You will, okay, I will, you're not doing it yet, but I will.
But you shall, ooh.
And they had a discussion on what will meant, what shall meant, and what must meant, so that was.
We never debated is, though.
We left that to the Supreme Court.
Yes. Any questions on the manifest?
I saw a paycheck in there for $15,293, I guess that was a severance package. Somebody get a raise and we didn't know about it? I was just scanning the numbers, I was like, whoa, that's a big one. They went across, and like, oh, it's a teacher's leaving this year, I'm assuming it's severance package.
It is.
Okay.
I just want to be sure. Derek?
Yeah, included in one of the manifests were the buyouts.
Okay.
Oh, there's a lot of people that get the lump sum at the end, right?
Right. Yeah, but we, this also included terminations from the, individuals leaving the district that had a rules, buyout, or severance.
There's also a paycheck in here for $226.50, just to go to the opposite end of the scale. Okay.
Thank you on the manifest.
There's three there.
This is in the fiscal year, so everyone was running in.
I think they all have three, so.
Thank you.
We're only six minutes behind.
I know, I realize, we made a remarkable comeback at the end. I want to thank the board for their restraint. Although, if Mr. Cooper wants to speak for 15 minutes, he'll kill us. You good? Excellent. So we need to go into non-public session under RSA 91-A colon.
Are we into encumbrances?
Oh, good point. There was no encumbrances brought forward.
Last meeting of the year.
By the administration. Which we asked you to think about it last time and tell us, which I don't think you told us anything, but we discussed the parking lot at GMS. And then you guys didn't bring anything.
That was consciously not brought forward.
Consciously.
As opposed to unconsciously.
As opposed to forgetting about it?
Yeah.
Trying to come up with an excuse? We actually did get a bid that came in nowhere near, as you recall, last summer, I believe, the bid came in for the, for the whole parking lot, and then it said, okay, if you only want to do this, this, and that. Well, just to finish the parking lot, came in higher than the whole, last year.
All right, yeah.
So it wasn't the half of what the original bid was?
No, it wasn't even close to the half.
Can we go back to the guy that gave us the half, and ask him, or, or is he the person?
I'd rather not say.
Turnaround time was pretty short, so.
Didn't really want to do it, but.
A little risk that did in there, I guess.
Well, I think it was partly.
I don't want to do it.
If you really want me to do it this quick, this is what it's gonna cost, it was a premium in there, I think.
Yeah, don't, price premium.
So Derek raises a good point, are there any encumbrances the board wants to bring This would be the point in the past when Dennis raised the track.
And we all got in trouble.
I'll admit I led you there, but you drank.
We all were chastised for that one.
Yes.